Good evening, I'm Rose Munoz and we have concluded closed session this evening. It is February 22 at 5:44 and I'm calling to order this regular meeting of the Santa Barbara Unified School District Board. And now for information about interpretation for this meeting.
Thank you Board President Munoz. Good evening, I will give this announcement regarding language interpretation in English and Spanish. Buenas tardes, voy a dar este anuncio sobre la interpretación en inglés y en español. In order to provide language access, we will be providing simultaneous bidirectional interpretation in English and Spanish. If you are bilingual, you do not have to click anything. If you are not bilingual in English and Spanish, you will have to select your language in order to hear the interpretation. If you are using a laptop or a desktop, at the bottom right of your screen, you will see a globe icon that says interpretation. Please click on the globe now and select English. If you are using an iPad or a phone, locate the three-dot menu and select Language Interpretation. Then select English and click Done. And when it's your turn to speak, please remember to be loud and clear and speak at a moderate pace. We are also offering American Sign Language, ASL interpretation for this meeting. If you will be using ASL interpretation, please use the Zoom app on your computer, tablet, or phone to join this meeting. If you joined this meeting through your web browser, you may not be able to see the ASL interpreter at all times. Esta reunión contará con interpretación simultánea bidireccional en inglés y en español. Si usted es bilingüe, no tiene que presionar nada. Si usted no es bilingüe, tendrá que elegir su idioma para escuchar la interpretación. Si está usando una computadora, verá un icono en la parte inferior de su pantalla a la derecha en forma de globo que dice "Interpretación". Haga clic ahí ahora y seleccione español. Si está usando un iPad o su teléfono, localice el menú de tres puntos, haga clic en Interpretación de idiomas, elija español, y finalizar. O si está en inglés, dice Done. Y recuerde cuando sea su turno de hablar, por favor, hable con voz fuerte y clara y a un paso moderado. Gracias. Are there any questions with regards to interpretation? If there are no questions, we may begin. Thank you.
Thank you. And now Dr. Maldonado, will you please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Yes, good evening. Please rise and face the flag. Put your right hand over your heart, ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, would you like to give us your superintendent report, please?
I'll be happy to. Thank you. Good evening Board President Munoz, Board members, cabinet members, and our public attending tonight. We are so pleased to see such a dramatic decrease in the infection rates across our county. And you'll hear more about it from Steve Vans' presentation a little later. And in particular, also within our schools and our offices. I'm very optimistic that our ability to live with this new reality is near. To arrive at this point has been long and arduous. The lessons we have learned over these last couple of years will be used to continue to live with us. We will continue to make decisions driven by factual data. Rely on the work with science and health experts and teaching experts and others to collaborate, knowing that it is in the best interest of all of us to keep each other's health and well-being at the center of all our decisions. This is something that we will take away from and keep going back to as we return and turn our attention now to our main goal, which is teaching and learning for all students. And ensuring that the social and emotional, as well as their academic gains, help them be prepared for college careers and life. Today, we will not have a performance, but we are going to hear from Kathy Serrano as part of our principal spotlights on her programs on after-school, which for many students like myself, become essential to our daily lives. So with that, I'd like to turn it over to Ms. Kathy Serrano. Kathy, are you with us?
Yes, I am. Hello, good evening. First of all, I would like to thank Board President Munoz, members of the Board, and Dr. Maldonado for allowing me the opportunity to share with the public about the after-school enrichment opportunities that we have for our students. My name is Kathy Serrano and I'm the administrator for the after-school and expanded learning programs. Our after-school AOK program has been serving the Santa Barbara school district community since 1999 through the funding of a state after-school education and safety grant. The purpose of this grant is to keep students safe after school. As research shows that between the hours of 3:00 and 6:00 p.m. is when students tend to get in trouble when not supervised. Through community partnerships and the implementation of our after-school curriculum, we have been able to provide enrichment opportunities to many students who otherwise would not be able to have them. For our funding sources, we prioritize homeless students, foster youth, socio-economically disadvantaged students, emerging multilinguals, students with disabilities, and students from working families. Next slide, please. The mission, vision, and goals of the after-school and enrichment program align to our district's mission, vision, and goals as well. And we also work towards our district's ABCs where we also prioritize achievement, belonging, and connections. Next slide, please. In our after-school program, we focus on achievement through the reinforcement of literacy and math skills. We have a wonderful partnership with the Santa Barbara Public Library and the Reading Ambassador Program, which trains elementary school children as storytellers and encourages them to read with younger friends and family. We also focus on math skill development through our Brain Blast curriculum, which takes a hands-on approach to learning and fundamental math skills. Next slide, please. We are proud to provide access to nutritious foods and physical activity to all the students who participate in our programs. Our students get a healthy snack and free supper through our food services department. And they also get the opportunity to learn about nutritious foods and to take some home through the partnership of SB County Food Bank's monthly kids farmer's market. We also focus on the students' access to physical education. And we are lucky to have partners like UCSB and their Swim to College program, where all of our third graders have the opportunity to learn how to swim with UCSB swimming instructors. Next slide, please. In our programs, we focus on belonging and connection through our professional development and push-in programs. Some of the professional development we provided this year includes COM training on building hope during a pandemic, youth mental health, mental health crisis protocol training, self-care with Ismael Huerta. We also have pushing programs like friendship groups, onsite CAM counseling, AOK student advisory groups, TK mentors through a partnership with Westmont College. And we also provide homework support and designated time for students to read for pleasure. Next slide, please. Our after-school programs, in our after-school programs, students also have the opportunity to participate in our education and to have other enrichment opportunities. We have partnered with the Santa Barbara Museum of Art, who send resident artists to work with our students. Students also have the opportunity to learn to dance through the partnerships of SB Dance Institute in elementary school and Miss Sabor at La Cumbre. Our students are working towards an AOK performing arts showcase, which will be held at the Joanne Kings Theater on May 25th. Everyone is welcome. Students also have the opportunities to experience live performances through our partnerships with the Granada Theater and the Santa Barbara Bowl. Finally, students learn from their program leaders and teachers' passions through clubs and classroom activities where students explore science, singing, arts and crafts, drawing, gardening, and a lot more. Next slide, please. We have great news this year. So the ACES AOK program is currently funded at eight sites. However, this year, we piloted an AOK program at Monroe Elementary School with great success. Monroe Elementary was the only Title I elementary school in our district without an AOK program. And through additional funding that the district received this year, we were able to provide this wonderful program to the Monroe community. Next slide, please. As a result of the increase of ACES funding, we have been able to increase our frontline staff's hourly rate to be more comparable to the rest of the after-school programs in our area. Furthermore, additional flexibility in the attendance requirement has allowed for the participation of students who normally would not be able to attend based on prior's attendance requirements. Finally, with the additional expanded learning opportunities program funding, we are working on expanding after-school programs to include TK and K spaces at all elementary sites starting next year. Next slide, please. And with that, once again, I thank you for the opportunity to share with the community the great things that happen in our after-school programs. I thank you for your time and open an invitation for you to visit us at one of our programs soon.
Thank you so much Kathy. That was super comprehensive and easy to follow. And we really appreciate all that you and your staff do for our kiddos after school and our families. Please extend our gratitude to your staff as well. Board members, thank you. Board members, having spent the last several weeks in school has re-energized me and the team to divide our work between instruction and operations. Tomorrow and Thursday, we will be conducting learning walks at all our elementary schools with volunteer teachers and principals accompanied by Dr. Nancy Frey, our literacy researcher and expert, and English learner expert Olivia Amador to ensure that we're looking and building the capacity of all our school leaders on observing language and literacy instruction, especially in the areas of English learners and all others. And the principals have gone together with the guidance of our assistant superintendent, Ana Scobedo, and Ms. Sarah Lockridge to select the focus area of student engagement. So we will be visiting all schools, all elementaries in the next couple of days, and I'm really excited about that. So again, as we turn our attention away from all this crisis work that we've been really focused on so much, really becoming an organization once again that's focused on teaching and learning. And that concludes my report. President Munoz, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Maldonado, and thank you, Ms. Serrano, for your presentation. We will now go to the COVID report. Mr. Vans?
Good evening, President Munoz, Board members, and Superintendent Maldonado. Yes, it's COVID report number six, I wish it was number sixteen, number thirty-six. Next slide, please. So, so the date today, actually, let's see, at our last board meeting on January 29th, I gave you data from, excuse me, our last board meeting on February 8th, I gave you data from the 29th. That was our case at a, for 100,000 people, case rate. So we had 126.5 per 100,000. That's what I reported to you last board meeting. This shows you as the data that I got, this was from the 12th. And as you could see, the drop dramatically to 33.9. I checked it this afternoon, and as of February 18th, which was six days ago, it already dropped 10 by 10. So that's down to 23 point, it's actually 23.4. So that's our case rate. Next slide, please. So I wanted to show you with this new graph what the picture looked like in terms of our students, the testing that we've done and the cases that were positive. So if you notice, the very first week out of 4,181 tests that we provided to our students, we had 546 positive cases. So that was 13.1. If you take a look at that second week of January 10, it looks like an outlier, because it is. That's the week we tested all students and staff. So that's why that that looks the way it does. But then, as you start going across, all the way to two weeks ago, that week of February 7th, you'll notice where we are now. And that's what we're, that's what's, that's the trend. That's what we're seeing. So out of 3,692 tests, 57 positives. And that's including our students who are returning to see if they can return to school. So that's including those numbers in these tests as well, the positives. Next slide, please. And again, taking a look at the staff numbers, you'll see. So we had 83 positives out of 616 staff. That's 13.5%. So now you see why we were scrambling, trying to make sure we had classes covered and schools were moving forward, even with our positive cases with our staff. And then going all the way to two weeks ago, we had six positives out of 283 tests, which is 2.1%, which is great news as well. Next slide. So with all that being said, that means that we keep the same protocols in place, but we shift from, instead of testing 20% of the student population or the school population, we shift to 10%. And it's very much aligned to what the superintendent was discussing, shifting from crisis work to more of the core work that we're doing. Because if teachers and staff are testing for COVID, that means we know what they're not doing in schools. So it's creating that balance of keeping everyone safe. So as you could see, it's very similar to what we've been doing, randomized and group testing, re-entry testing, of course, testing for both re-entry, that means those positive cases for students and staff who want to return to school or ready to return after five days. Extracurricular athletics testing, and then of course symptomatic, and those who just want to be tested, just to be safe. COVID testing over the spring break, we are still working on it at this time. So the discussion is, today at our COVID task force, we were really discussing not how to just rely solely on our schools, but really relying on our partners. And what can we get in terms of how many more health or at-home tests? So that's one possibility, because we've been getting more of those at-home tests. Maybe distributing those, incorporating, you know, we know that public health has testing sites as well. So doing those things, and I think a crucial part of this process will be communicating to our families. And knowing that just communicating one time is not going to just cover it. We're gonna have to continue to communicate, let them know where they can go. And then ultimately, being prepared as we return. So that would be increasing, instead of 10%, it would be 20% just realizing where we are in terms of returning. So that's the balance we're facing. Vaccination clinics, we will have one this Saturday at Santa Barbara Junior High School for our Eastside community. We're really excited about that. We know that that will be a really good turnout. And we just had our clinic at Washington, which we had about 150 people there last week. So we're already working on March, so we're not giving up. So, and I know public health, they've been a wonderful partner with this process. So, and next slide, our last slide here. And this is really the question that I'm sure that you've been hearing. So what's going on with masks in schools? As you know, as of February 15th, it was clearly presented to us that indoor masking in our schools still are, that's in place. And then we're waiting to hear what California Department of Public Health will provide to us on February 28th in terms of new guidance in our schools. One thing I know that Superintendent Maldonado met with the county superintendents today. And one of the questions they were asking is, what would you like us to communicate to Sacramento in terms of this process? And we just, we asked one thing, clear guidance. Give us clear guidance with this. Don't make it wishy-washy. Don't make it blurred lines. We just need something that will really help us based on the science and help us move forward. So that's my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Vans. Ms. Trujillo, are there any public comments on this item?
Evening, President Munoz and members of the Board. I will wait a few seconds to see if we have any public comments. If you can just give me a couple of seconds. Thank you, we do have a public comment. I will start with Leandra. If you can please state your full name.
Hi, I'm Leandra Shellhoo Conway.
Go ahead.
I wanted to take a moment to speak with the Board today and bring light to racially charged incident that happened to my son Jared Shellhoo Conway, who attended Santa Barbara Junior High.
Ms. Leandra, I'm sorry to interrupt you. We are speaking on the item for COVID report.
Okay.
So.
Is there another opportunity for public comment?
Another opportunity under non-agenda items, which is coming up later.
Understood. My apologies.
Thank you. Next speaker is Justin Shores.
Hi, thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes.
My comments tonight are just to request to end the mask mandate for children. I think you should make it a choice for parents, because there definitely will be parents that will send their kids to school in masks. But there's a lot of parents that need the choice at this point. So I just urge you again to, to put the choice out there. And a lot of school districts across California have decided to do it. So this is not unprecedented. Once again, I'm gonna bring, bring it to your attention, the grand jury in Santa Barbara found that because of COVID policy, our children have incalculable damage. And so this is the image that you have done to our kids through your policy and through your lack of action. So because you're still doing it, because you're still causing harm to kids, I'm still gonna keep calling it out. Hopefully, you will admit that you were wrong one of these days, instead of just brushing it under the rug. Because this is serious. Kids have been damaged and it's under your watch and you're not doing anything about it. You need to let parents decide. So it's not your fault. So it's not, you're not liable for it. For all the damage you have caused. And hopefully, like I said, one day you'll admit you're wrong and say that, you know, see that what you've done to our children, to our futures. So thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next speaker is Ladonta King.
Sorry, I was also wanting to speak on the matter after Leandra's. I'll go also to the other.
Thank you. Next speaker is Waco. If you can please state your full name.
Yeah, Waco. So I agree with the gentleman that just spoke. I think it was Justin Shores. I think it's totally silly that you guys continue this charade with masks and all this stuff because you have the public health department literally saying that everybody else, except for kids, can walk around the planet maskless when you literally are telling our children that in order for them to come to school, they have to wear masks. So as adults, you know, we can walk into a bar and hang out for hours, drinking beer, whatever you want to do, with no mask worries whatsoever. But yet our kids come into schools, public schools by the way, which, you know, are our tax dollars paying for this stuff and for you guys, you two, you people sitting there in those chairs. They have to go to school masked, wearing with masks on. It's nuts. I don't understand how all, what is it, six of you, seven of you can sit there thinking that this makes complete sense. And for any parents out there that don't fully grasp this concept that everybody can walk around with no mask on, but our kids have to strap them on and go to school. So I think it's a disgrace. I look forward to each one of you not sitting in those chairs because someone will replace you come the next time we get to elect a new person. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Annie Blanc.
Just spoke about giving, are you, are you hearing me? My time is still frozen. Okay. I wanna agree with Justin and Waco, who just spoke that masks should be a choice. So, and I have three children. I'm a single mom. I have much more to do than coming here every time and asking for the same thing. It feels like I'm speaking to a wall because you don't listen to our side of stories. You just listen to your own probably news. And I have two children. One, she has extreme anxiety. I had to put her out of school. She's being homeschooled because she failed on Zoom. She could not do Zoom. And then when she went back with mask, social distancing, she was extremely anxious. She's home. She's homeschooling. And also, I don't want to have to be discriminated because I choose not to give her experimental treatment. But I do have a junior high and I really would like him to go without the mask. It's time to stop this. You're getting your vaccines for the kids and parents who want to do it. The numbers are lower. Everybody's going out without masks. So it's time to let these kids read free. You know, let them have fresh air in their brain. It's not good for them to learn. It's not good for them not to see facial expressions. If you haven't seen these studies, because you're not looking everywhere. And if you are sitting in a board of education, you must look every information that's out there, not just a narrow information, everywhere if you're sitting there. And put your hand in your heart and know what you're doing to the kids' child.
I'm. Next speaker is Finnegan Wright.
Hi, my name is Finnegan Wright. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, I'm a sophomore at Dos Pueblos High School. It's really encouraging to see the trends that the numbers have with COVID cases going down. I'm sure that many of these developments are probably a result of the smart policies that have been taken by the district to protect public health and protect the health of our students. It's, I mean, the science is settled. Masks are good. Having one mask on one person protects the other person. And then if both of you have masks, they're protecting each other. That's good. Masks aren't really an individual choice. It's a choice of the public. Because we don't want people going around just spewing COVID particles and getting out of the vehicle sick. So it makes complete sense for the district to continue maintaining masks until it seems that it's sufficiently safe for us to not use masks anymore. So I think it's good that, yes, our numbers are improving, are improving. And once they've improved enough, then I'm sure like masks will become redundant. And I'm sure everyone will be happy about that. But until then, I haven't heard anyone at my school complaining about having to wear masks. I probably met a couple of you who have been like, oh, it's not fun all the time. But like, everyone knows that it's good for our health. And so I am just happy that the district is maintaining this policy until we get out of this. And I'm happy with the way that things are going. So thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Erin Jones.
Good evening, everyone. Can you hear me all right?
Yes.
Thank you very much. My name is Erin Jones. And I have two kids in the local school district, Roosevelt and Santa Barbara High. I just want to, despite the comments and the previous comments, I just want to, as the previous speaker said, just applaud you for doing your exercising, your difficult yet due diligence of following public health protocols as it pertains to dealing with this unprecedented pandemic and the guidelines that are set forth by public health officials as opposed to the opinions of those who think they know more than the public health officials. I know that this has been very, very challenging. And despite the abundance of misinformation, you're doing your best under difficult situations. So I personally applaud you. And I feel also feel for the parents who are struggling with this, as we all are struggling with this. So there is no exceptionalism in terms of the plight that people are experiencing here. We are all in the same boat together. We're all struggling. And finally, I will say, as the director of a local childcare center told me not long ago, even two-year-olds can wear a mask and not have a problem. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Judah Nielsen.
Yeah, hi, I'm Judah Nielsen. I'm a sophomore at Dos Publis. And I just, I'm coming here once again to thank you for your continued efforts in keeping our community safe as we approached, I guess, the light at the end of this tunnel. I just want to look back and see that the district has done an excellent job at making sure that we're all safe. I think the testing was a great idea. I'd like to apologize for my misspeaking last, last meeting. I said vaccine mandates, they were not vaccine mandates, but I'd also like to point out that there was a lot of healthy discussion from the board last meeting when it was pointed out, like, oh, what's the effect we can have on children, like, will they, or sorry, will they learn languages slower from having people's mouths covered up, because people, you know, use mouth motions a lot to learn how to speak. So that was a very interesting point, and, you know, it made a lot of sense to actually have a productive discussion, I feel, for once, so just thank you once again.
Thank you. Next speaker is Maria Kastner.
Good evening, I would like to point out, and I will send it to you, I'm not sure if I already have, because I know I have sent it to the county and to Santa Barbara City College, more than 400 studies on the failure of compulsory COVID interventions, lockdowns, restrictions, and closures, and they have them all numbered, the sources are all in each study, and I will send all these studies to you, you can click on each and every link, and this was composed by Dr. Paul Alexander, epidemiologist focusing on clinical epidemiology, evidence-based medicine and research methodology, and he has a bachelor's in epidemiology from Massachusetts University and a master's degree from Oxford University. Oxford University is the number one, the highest ranking university in the world. He earned his PhD from the Castron Department of Health Research Methods Evidence and Impact, and he's also a former World Health Organization consultant and senior advisor to the US Department of HHS in 2020 for the COVID-19 response. And so it would be nice if everybody can see all these studies and students can kind of explore of what they have been told and what can really work for, what work and what doesn't work, because I'm gonna, I'm gonna send this to the board, but basically, you're...
Next speaker is Nicole Montalvo.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Sorry about that, technical difficulties. All I have to say is that I'm just wanting to echo what some of the other commenters have said, I mean, really, it's enough, it's been two years of this, our kids are exhausted, the teachers are exhausted, they're so tired of playing, you know, mask mandate enforcer and all of this nonsense, and we're really tired of it getting in the way of our kids' education and stepping all over their mental health, and I'm just calling on Santa Barbara Unified to finally see how ridiculous this is, to finally see that it is parents' choice what happens to their kids. It is time that you guys join the ranks of the growing number of other districts who are saying enough is enough, we will not enforce this any longer, it is a parent's choice. Please, Santa Barbara Unified, it's your turn, we've had enough of this, thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Lucy Oliver.
Hello, I'm a student at DP, and I'm not sure why people, especially the students represented or representatives would say he represents all students with masks and vaccine mandates, he does not represent me, nor does he represent many students, there are many of us that hate masks, will not get the vaccine, are being disrespected or discriminated against wearing masks and being ignored. Are we not the most vulnerable? You are not representing me, so please stop saying you are representing all students, because it's actually not true. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Chadwick, if you can please state your full name.
Hi, my name's Erin Chadwick, and I just wanted to call in and one, I think one of the things that feels really important is that we try to have these meetings in person again. I know that numbers are down and hopefully for the sake of everyone, we can get back to doing things more normal, so that you can see our face and just understand, so we can communicate more, just the public to you guys and vice versa, and continue these really important conversations. So I'm asking the board to really think hard about that and letting this be what it was in the beginning and not get comfortable with just doing this on Zoom, although I would love a hybrid, I think that that would be the best thing for everyone, but I think in-person is crucial. And then also just that these masks mandates for the kids would be optional and not a mandate, that you would leave it to the parent to understand and know what's best for their child, whether it's affecting their emotional health more than any physical concern that they have, or vice versa, if a parent feels very afraid for, you know, their physical health, that they would be able to have that choice, and I think that that makes sense in this situation, and I think that all kids are going back to homes where their families aren't wearing masks or haven't been, they're not under these mandates anymore, and so I just feel like we should be doing this in the, in the schools and letting people choose what they want to do with their own children. Thank you very much.
Thank you. President Munoz, that concludes public comment on this item.
Thank you, Mr. Hio, now I will turn to the board members for comments on the COVID-19 report.
Oh, okay. Thank you, Mr. Vince.
Ms. Alvarez? Oh, I'm sorry, did, did you want to go first?
I don't know if you were telling me yes or no, but we can go to her, you've recognized her, that's fine.
Right. Well, thank you for the report, and I'm so happy to see that numbers are going down and that we continue our surveillance. And I think slide number five, I hope it's the same one as I have, as you have, number five, we decreased our random testing to 20%, I believe, and now it's, I mean, we started with 20%, now we're at 10%.
Yes.
When are we going to decrease that? It seems to me that the numbers are lower right now, that we can start thinking about maybe been doing 5% or less, so that we can start, like you say, focusing on the core, on our core mission of educating kids, not that we haven't done that, because I know we keep doing that, I visited the schools and believe you, I believe me, I see kids learning, I see kids happy, I see teachers very busy working with the students, so I'm very pleased for, for what I have seen, but I am interested in knowing when we are going to decrease that testing of the school population.
I, that's a great question, and that's really one of the purposes of our COVID task force, to actually look at the numbers, get guidance from, I know members of our task force are also involved with various state task force in terms of health and resources and so on, so we get all of our information and we determine when we would go down. Just to remind you, we're still at, I believe that was 33.4 case, the case rate, so it seems like it's low compared to where we were with Omicron, but the highest rate during this time last year was 99, I believe, was the case rate. So it's still relatively high, but it's going down quickly, and so I, I could see us in the future, near future, just again, reducing that rate and coming up with the decision to keep schools safe, schools safe while we've, you know, focus on shifting to the instruction.
And, Mr. Vince, can you remind us when we can stop wearing masks?
When we can stop wearing masks?
Yes.
So at the school sites, outside, you can wear masks, so that's optional, wearing masks, but inside the school with kids, it's required to wear masks. Any guidance regarding with our schools, with students in the school, any guidance regarding the masks will come on the 28th, that's what we've been told, and so that's what we're looking for from California Department of Public Health.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Sims Moten?
Yes, thank you, thank you, Mr. Vince, for the report, and it is good to hear those numbers, and I would just say that this has been a long exhaustive trip, we all have been here, we stayed the course, to get to our ultimate goal is making sure that our students are back in school in person, and that's taken everybody's effort to do so, and we've done that in terms of that, so I appreciate everybody's efforts with regard to this, and when we get to the mask, we're going to get there too, and it's going to take everybody's efforts, continued patience, and again, following the guidelines that we must do for schools, which are different, from the governor can come on and say, we're going to do this, but we have state of emergencies at the county in different levels, so there's certain things that we have to do in certain timeframes in which we can actually make the change from when it's announced with regards to the governor, and it, I know you guys are like whiplash trying to figure, what did he say, you know, and then we got to do that, so, because there's the expectation that we're going to be able to change as quickly as he's saying that, but I, I just want to say that we're almost there, keep hanging in with this, it is our ultimate goal is to not have the mask mandate, that was to make sure that we had enough immunity, so that we would get here and we would get back to be able to seeing our faces, and I know that's the ultimate goal that we want to get to, so I, I appreciate the report, so glad to see those numbers going down, you know, with regards to that, and I'm just asking for a little bit more patience and understanding the state, of course, we will get to our ultimate goal of, again, keeping our kids safe in school and hopefully at this point, without masks.
Ms. Ford?
Thank you so much, just wanted to clarify that in, on the list of folks that are getting tested, it's also students who are attending overnight trips?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
And then also, I wonder if you could restate, because I, I didn't totally understand the direction that you're heading on COVID testing during spring break, so I wonder if you could perhaps describe lessons learned from the winter break, COVID testing?
Well, I think that we were fortunate to be very proactive at that time, so we were able to get our home tests, so we started off before leaving distributing what we can with our home tests, so that was number one, we had developed a partnership with Aptitude as a backup, because we also have our own testing process here within the district, unlike other school districts that use Aptitude as their primary source. So that was number two, making sure that we had that in place. And then the, the third part is actually, as soon as we saw the, the rates of Omicron skyrocketing, getting, actually coming together as a cabinet and addressing what needed to be addressed immediately, which means communicating to our community where they could get tested, and to make sure that we were communicating with our principals. We know that some schools didn't deliver the, the tests as much as we would have liked that to have happened, so instead, they delivered the test Sunday before school started. So all of these processes, all these processes, we, we, we learned as we were doing it, I would say now we're seeing in terms of this, that the, the rate is lower, we have everything in place, we have state testers at the two schools. We originally planned to do state testing over the, the break, we were planning on doing it at Sam Marcus High School and at Santa Barbara High School. We're realizing right now that it looks like, we talked to the principals and we were saying we need staff to be around during spring break to do this, even though we have testers, and as you know, people are, they need their break. So it's a balance, one thing that we learned, it's, it's truly a balance of taking care of people's wellness, as well as being smart and responsible in terms of the testing. So we shifted from knowing that it's going to be really difficult to fill those two testing sites with the state testers, we're shifting from that to focusing on our other partnerships, as well as we have, again, we'll have home tests, getting them available, trying to accrue more home tests, so we could get that out there, and the last thing is making sure when we return, we're immediately set up to test people immediately upon their return, so.
Ms. Capes?
Yeah, that, that was the nature of my questions too, just to, thank you, to echo the, the wonderful benefit that we've provided by sending home tests, and if that can happen, that would be tremendously helpful, but also just being very clear about any requirement for testing to come back, et cetera, so, and also understanding too, I've been to some of these vaccine clinics at night, and it does take staff to be there, and it's, again, incredible partnership with public health, but another toll of, of all this work, so let's, let's, I'd love to maybe next meeting here, more of the specifics of the testing plan during spring break, I think that makes sense. And I, again, just to talk about masks, I think it's really important to, as we continue to take our, take guidance from the state in terms of masks in schools, to recognize the, the, the context, and the context is unfortunately that child vaccinations is remarkably low, even in this county, I just checked today, and it's for five to 11, it's just 30%, so even though our county is at 70%, five to 11 is an age group where there's still access issues or hesitancy, so I think that that's just an important factor that I've read from public health officials, that sure, yeah, let's, let's take off the masks in schools, but only schools where there's a high vaccination rate, so all of these efforts of clinics and Santa Barbara High and Roosevelt and Washington, and just the more that we can continue to do that, I, for one, our, our family got our flu shot at one of these vaccine clinics for COVID, you can also get your flu shot, so for the public to know that too, it's an easy, weasy way to get your flu shot, easier than the pharmacies, just go to your local school if we're having one of these clinics, so just remember, masks and vaccines go together, thanks.
Mr. Kelly?
Thank you so much for your presentation. I remember I mentioned this last meeting about the social emotional effects of masking, I know for me personally, when we're talking about masks and the future of masking, one thing that I think about is, do the social and emotional effects of wearing masks outweigh the physical risk of not wearing masks? I think that's a big thing that we need to think about when we're determining the future of masking in schools, so if I could get any data or something, any information for the next COVID report on how this affects maybe language development, emotional development, and overall, just, I guess that's not, the discomfort students feel in general, just wearing masks are all factor, are all factors, but if we could get something like that in the report, I think that would be great. And then, yeah, I just think it's important to recognize choice in general with this argument, I know a lot of people are saying like, oh, adults can go indoors places like bars, restaurants, grocery stores, all of those are places you can choose to be, but with school, you have to go, so I think that's an important distinguish, an important thing to distinguish when we're talking about masks, and that's a big part of it for me, that all students have to go to school and wear masks, so it's important that we protect each other, because we don't have a choice together, thank you.
Well, thank you. I also, as my fellow board members, am, you know, pleased about the decrease in the rates, I appreciate asking for clarity with the policy, you know, as the announcement for February 28th and so forth, and just clarity for us to have, to also share with parents, teachers and, and the students, of course, and very appreciative of the staff that's available, making themselves available for, like, for the February 26 clinic, vaccination clinic that we're going to have, just to show, you know, it shows our community coming together, and as Ms. Capes said, you know, the flu shot, the COVID and shot, they're so important, so thank you much to everyone involved.
Thank you.
Okay, now we will go to board comments and correspondence. Ms. Sims Moten?
Yes, thank you, President Munoz, I, it's just, it's just good news to be able to be back here again, I know we're, everybody's ready for a spring break, and I know that our staff is looking forward to that, and I wish everyone a good spring break, to that, and it may be preempting that, but anyway, I just want to put it out there, because everybody is, is just needing a break, and also as we continue to celebrate Black History Month, there are different, there are events still going on through the end of this month, you can go to june10sb.org to get a list of the, the events that are going on, some of them are online, some of them are in person, so I encourage you to continue to do that as we continue to learn about history and how does it change what we do in the future, so thank you. to get a list of the, the um, events that are going on. Some of them are online, some of them are in person. So I encourage you to continue to do that as we continue to learn about history and how does it change what we do in the future. So thank you.
Okay, um, uh, Ms. Alvarez?
Thank you. It's been a very busy couple of weeks, I think, since last time we met. I, I kind of lost track of time. We continue to visit schools and um, it's just been absolutely, like I said, refreshing to see the students, to see the teachers and, and in general, the staff members that we spoke to are so happy to be at work and so excited to tell us what they do on a daily basis. So that's been extremely refreshing. I also had the privilege to be a guest speaker at the Apple Academy at San Marcos. And it's really interesting to be in front of seniors, of teenagers. I, I, I have to tell you, I don't think I engage them as much as I engage my public when I talk about financial reports. But it was such a, such a wonderful experience to be there. So uh, I'm happy to be at the school sites. And then the only, the other comment I like to share mostly with the board members is uh, I'm sure you're aware of the governor's proposal of universal kindergarten. And uh, that proposal, of course-
There was preschool anywhere in the Capitol. So, ooh, I think I did it.
That was not me. That proposal, of course, is an unfunded mandate. So I, I have asked Ms. Hernandez and Dr. Maldonado to bring us uh, an opportunity for us to talk about it at the next meeting and see how we, as board member, we can provide some advocacy towards this funding that we desperately need. So that's, I believe that's coming up at the next board meeting. So thank you. And that's all of my comments for tonight.
Thank you. Ms. Ford?
Thank you so much. Uh, thank you, Ms. Alvarez, for bringing that up. I think a lot of people don't know that kindergarten is not required in the state of California. You have to just attend school by age six. Um, a couple of the things I wanted to say, on February 11th, I participated in a commission on teacher credentialing hearing about whether our K-12 occupational therapists and physical therapists could qualify for a teacher's credential. And I think this is a really interesting and important conversation because we have such a shortage of these professionals who choose to work in our schools. I also want to say that I too am very grateful that we continue to receive correspondence from the public asking for mask wearing uh, requirement to just be optional soon. And I too am hopeful, like so many folks, that we will receive specific guidance from the California Public Health next week and perhaps change this public health order. It isn't up to us. It is up to the California Public Health Department. And really, kudos to our student board member Dawson Kelly on the interview that he conducted on his Insta account with Susan Klein Rothschild about the current state of COVID. It was really informative. So finally, in honor of President's Day and Black History Month, I'll close my comments with a quote from Barack Obama. He said, "One voice can change a room. And if one voice can change a room, then it can change a city. And if it can change a city, it can change a state. And if it can change a state, it can change a nation. And if it can change a nation, it can change the world. Your voice can change the world. This is why we do this work." Thanks.
Uh, thank you. I wanted to um, just make an announcement about an upcoming um, event that I saw that will be on display from March till May, Vincent Van Gogh Sunflower Art Exhibit on State Street. A nice outdoor um, exhibit with our schools participating, which include Dos Pueblos, Santa Barbara High, San Marcos High School, Galita Valley, Santa Barbara Junior High and La Colina Junior High. Painting these flowers during art class. They're going to have an opening event on March 3rd at 5:00 PM at Annapolis State. So we're hoping that uh, families will have their children out there to see all the work of our students. Um, Mr. Kelly?
Thank you. Uh, yeah, so since the last meeting, a lot of guidelines have changed regarding COVID-19 uh, with the mask wearing indoors. And with this, I've noticed a lot of divide between students and, and mask wearing within school. Uh, and I think the main cause of this is um, misinformation or not being informed. Um, so as uh, Board Member Ford said, uh, I interviewed Susan Klein Rothschild from Santa Barbara County Health. And uh, I just cleared up some of uh, the misinformation and informed the student body about the future of masks in our district. Uh, yeah, and that's all for me.
Okay, um, at this time, we'll go to public comments on non-agenda items within jurisdiction of the Board of Education. Uh, the comments are, like I said, not uh, to be on the agenda for this evening in terms of the subjects. And each speaker is allotted 90 seconds each. Please remember the new protocol and raise your hand on Zoom to be recognized. Uh, Ms. Trujillo, do we have any public comments on items that are not on the agenda?
Thank you, President Munoz. We do have public comment on this item. I will begin with Waco. If you can please state your full name.
Yeah, hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Uh, son, hold on just a second, please. Hold on. Hi, um, I just wanted to uh, add a few things here. So you have CRT and DEI, which is the diversity, equity and inclusion. Uh, I was told that they both don't exist as far as uh, uh, for students. Um, staff, I think it's kind of leaked into your system of whatever you're doing. Um, but I think number one, uh, if it's in the student realm, you need to ban it, uh, because it was explained that it's not there. Uh, it's damaging for all races and also it creates segregation. Um, if you guys remember your history, um, or if you don't, go back and, and read some stuff about Martin Luther King because that's kind of where, uh, where all this is going. Um, second, public institutions. Uh, I think you need to make all curriculum transparent in every single school. Um, each school should have public facing and easy accessible libraries. Um, currently they're not. You can go and try to search for it. And unless you're a parent of a child that goes to the school currently, you can't access things like that. Um, as far as uh, this COVID task force thing, I know we just got done talking about COVID, but I think we need to save our tax dollars and remove that task force. I don't, I don't think it's necessary anymore. Given your case number, even though I don't think we need to focus on case numbers, I think we should continue to try to navigate and, and talk about death counts instead. Uh, this fear tactic of case rate, you know, going up or down is just silly at this point. So, thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Justin Chores.
Thank you. Uh, when, when Hilda Maldonado was um, was brought on as a supervisor or a superintendent, it was during COVID. There was only a few people that were part of the process. Their parents were really outside of it. In fact, it was about a four-week process. And then you came out and you said, oh, we have the perfect candidate, Hilda. And she came and she's done a pretty uh, bad job. She got a really bad report from all the teachers. Um, and now she's hiring a bunch of people from LA, all her friends without bidding. Um, I believe she even lives in LA. So this is, these are things that are really bad for our community and for our, for us to get through these, these um, divisive issues. We want people that are from our community and that know our community. So I think if you're hiring, especially if you can look internal to the, the school district, hire somebody that's worked their way up in our own school district rather than giving somebody $200,000 to move up from LA that only Hilda knows. I think that's a real big conflict of interest, especially so there's the COVID guy and then there's the other, there was another contract that was given. Um, I think it was a, a CRT contract that was given to her friends from, from uh, LA. So anyway, we need to really watch who we're hiring and this, this, you can't just give it to a friend. You have to give bids. You have to get applicants. You know, give us some options. So we're, we're not having one uh, funneled um, source. And if they're all coming from LA, it's really bad. We, I mean, they have, they have horrible schools down there.
Next speaker is Leandra. If you can please state your full name.
Leandra Shalhoub Conaway.
Thank you, go ahead.
I'm here to talk about uh, my son and his experience. He is an eighth grader at Santa Barbara Junior High. He's been in Santa Barbara Unified School District since TK. That's the age of six years old. He's been called a nigger three times that are on his record, I'm sure, in his file. The first at six years old in TK at the campus of Monroe Elementary. The second in second grade um, at Washington Elementary. And the third has been for the past two weeks at Santa Barbara Junior High. This past Wednesday, it happened in cla- in the classroom. Um, nigger and monkey is what he was being called by classmates during the class break. Um, something that apparently began as wrestling escalated extremely quickly and ended with um, three children or three students holding him down while um, a fourth student put his knee on my child's neck and said George Floyd. Um, he then traded places with another student and that student put his knee on my child's head. Um, laughing, saying George Floyd again and videotaped it with his cellphone. Um, I brought this to the attention of seven people on admin. And, and the only response I got via email was from Mrs. Curry, the president, or I'm sorry, the principal. Um, I feel very unsupported at school right now and I feel like a change, I demand a change take place in schools immediately.
Thank you. Next speaker is Leandra. I'm sorry. Danny Blanc.
Hi, uh, I, I still have a son in ER district and I got very concerned about the curriculum. I don't think we have a, a transparent transparency in the curriculum. And it, it got my attention. I'm not happy. And even if you say that's not true, that you don't have CRT or et cetera, I see a lot of changes in my son that I'm not happy about. When he comes home talking stuff that I do not agree. I think that should not be given to students. And I really would like to have uh, transparency and we really know what is being teaching to our kids and not behind our backs. So I think that's be great and I will be appreciated. I would love to homeschool him, but he chooses to be there. And since I fight for freedom in many, many ways, I want him to give a freedom to be where he wants to be. So, but I think, I really hope we get in some improvements in many ways in this district. So I feel comfortable and still having him there. Okay, thank you. So transparency, it'll be a great thing. Thank you.
Thank you. And next speaker is Jordan Kilbrew.
Uh, hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, everyone. Um, I just want to take a moment. Uh, my name is Jordan Kilbrew and I want to stand firmly in support of Leandra, the black mother that just spoke. Um, ahead of the other speaker, um, in support of their family and this child. Uh, situations like this occur all the time and not in isolation. You know, situations like this should not happen, yet I'm reminded of my own story of being followed, followed home from school and jumped for being black and queer when I was in public school. I was called all sorts of derogatory names and and I'm reminded of the isolation fear, the community disconnect that I felt afterwards and the resources that I never received. I hope that this year, you know, we're in 2022 now, with all the information and support and services we have and all these statements and affirmation that we standing at eight, especially towards our youth, that resources are being provided to the affected family, the black youth and the community around us. They deserve more than that. They also deserve more so intentional actions, intentional education, intentional changes made to better this harmful and traumatic situation. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next speaker is Letizia Fornay.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hello, board members. My name is Letizia Fornay Resch. I co-organize or appealing justice SSB. First, I would like to uplift the parent of the victim that spoke earlier. I am very disappointed that this is not a line item that y'all should be talking about today. As a parent of a Santa Barbara Unified School District student, I'm outraged, saddened, and I'm so sad that I'm here to talk about anti-blackness, racist hate crime that took place in Santa Barbara Junior High. The lack of consideration for the victim and the protection of the students is disgraceful. Where is the protection of our black youth? Based on your hate motivated behavior, Board Policy 514 5.9 that claims to provide a safe learning environment and protect students from discrimination, harassment, intimidation, bullying, and other behavior motivated by hostile and violent acts, where is that? Where is the strategy to provide harmonious relationships among students? There needs to be mental health support for the student and the family immediately. We need um, parents, sorry, we need participation from restorative justice organizers to help create a safe environment for our students. And there needs to be a statement that is truthful and accountable, specifically naming anti-blackness. And that is, I didn't get any notification as a Santa Barbara Unified School District that there is violence happening in one of our schools. That is imperative that we all know what's happening in the schools. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next speaker is Ladante King.
Um, excuse me. Yes, good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Right on. Thank you very much. Um, I too am calling and standing in solidarity with the, the mother of the uh, young black man who uh, was assaulted. Um, and um, disrespected. Um, as it's been said, this happens quite a bit, quite often, um, to the person who mentioned that there's you know, horrible schools down in LA. I'm a product of the Los Angeles Unified School District, which has a ton of great uh, schools down there. And um, I see Santa Barbara Unified as one of those districts as well. That's great. I have a niece and nephew that's in school. They're the district. Um, my charge would be to the district to help start to um, provide spaces for parents. Um, I think about the parents of these young men who assaulted this man. I think about the parents of the children who were around, who probably were not necessarily directly involved, but either egged on or were apart and also confused about what was happening at that time. Um, there's a ton of work that can be done culturally, um, not for uh, people of color, but for our Caucasian community here in Santa Barbara. And um, I think that there's a ton of opportunities to be able to do that, to be able to address the root causes of the decisions. Um, those habits, those attitudes, those beliefs, those expectations that would cause these children that learned behavior that they where, where they learned it and why they thought that that was enough and cool to do. Um, I thank you for the time.
Thank you. Next speaker is Chiana Dre.
Hello, thank you. Yes, my name is Chiana Dre. Okay, thank you. Um, I'm a co-founder of Juneteenth Santa Barbara and I just want to uplift the words of Leandra in support of the impacted student and the family of this racially charged hate crime, which is what this was. And I want to make sure we name that, um, that occurred at Santa Barbara Junior High. Um, I urge the board to address the matter quickly to honor the needs and wants of the impacted student and their family as well as center the needs um, of the student and the family and any and all solutions that may and hopefully do come out of all of the support that you're going to be hearing tonight. Um, when the family approached leadership, they were left feeling that the incident was minimized and the family is made to feel isolated in this, as you heard in the comment that was made. Um, and without those resources, uh, we can't adequately support this family um, or rectify the situation. Um, and as I have been listening and listening to quotes by President Obama and all this highlighting of Black History Month, I want to remind the board that in June of 2020, you all gave public support in a resolution that declared racism a public health emergency and committed support to black students and families of the district. So this is an opportunity to step up to that promise and to model equitable practice and support for the student who was impacted by this hate crime and for the family. So please know that this family has support from an entire community of people and we will continue to advocate on behalf of the student and the family until overwhelming support and efforts have been made to rectify the situation. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Erin Jones.
Uh, good evening again. Uh, as the father of two children of color in the local school districts, how I learned about the incident that impacted the child of our community member and sister Leandra, I was disgusted and angered uh, immediately. Uh, members of the community have come together to support uh, Leandra, but I just have to say it's really intriguing to me that there are those in this community who would condemn CRT without even having any basis of understanding that it, what it stands for, that it's existed as a, as a field of study for decades. Much less to have the audacity to try to, to, to tell anybody in this community to go back and look at Martin Luther King. Um, this stuff has been going on and permeates our society and our existence. And I know that you are well aware of that by virtue of some of the decisions that you have made, which I applaud. However, this stuff, I was going to- However, this stuff, I was going to say something else besides stuff, but this stuff keeps happening. And we are sick and tired of it, despite the fact that there are those in this community who would, who would advocate or live as though racism does not exist. Clearly, this is an incident that indicates and demonstrates that not only does racism exist, but it permeates race. So I really hope and I really pray that this, this, the August board, that you do the right thing in terms of supporting. Our most vulnerable and disadvantaged students. Who perpetually and repeatedly are the victims of physical and mental and verbal abuse in our beloved community. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Anna Arce.
Hello.
Go ahead.
I wanted to uplift Leandra, a mother such as myself. And her child. As a parent whose child is about to be transferred to Santa Barbara High School. I receive millions of Parents Square notifications from Santa Barbara Junior High constantly. And I did not receive anything that was going on in regards to the youth in our community. This child like needs support and. I'm sorry, it's just like. As a parent to see that, like.
Ms. Arce, are you still there? We're going to go ahead with our next speaker is Connie Alexander.
All right. Good evening. Can you hear me? I hope you can hear me. Thank you. So I am here because I want to uplift Leandra and her son. This is a child that I have personally worked with and I have known since he was in third grade. So I'm going to set aside the personal feeling here for just a moment. And ask you to really affirm how policies and procedures work. Because I have questions around whether or not this family was given the information they needed to file a complaint. And how that was handled. I have questions around procedure for staff and communication for staff and how that was handled. And when you do this investigation, you're going to find out that you have some work to do. I also want to know why this family was not immediately offered mental health services. They did, they were not offered mental health services immediately, which should have been done. The students that were suspended, and only a couple of them were suspended. I want to know if they were supervised and if they just had a couple of days off. I want to know where is the re-entry safety plan for this student and how this happens. So we have to get past things that feel, make us feel uncomfortable, that might feel in some way performative. And procedure is important. And voice for these parents and this family is going to need counseling. They are going to need mental health services. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Cressida Silvers.
Thank you. Good evening, President Muñoz, board members, Superintendent Maldonado. My name is Cressida Silvers and I'm a parent at SBUSD. Our education pod received notice that anti-black racial slurs have been used against a black student at Santa Barbara Junior High. And harm done to them. We are here to support the student who has been a target of this anti-black aggression and their family. Most of all, we want to make sure that the student who was attacked and their family receives sufficient mental health support. We also want to ensure that the student is safe from ongoing aggression and retaliation. We support restorative justice methods to be instituted immediately. We support ongoing early education against anti-blackness in all forms in our school district. As a prevention to this kind of intolerance. We hope action will happen swiftly to the satisfaction of the family involved. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Simone. If you can, please state your full name.
Hello, Simone Akila. I'm one of the co-founders of Healing Justice Santa Barbara. I wanted to call today to just uplift Leandra. I am a black parent myself. And I want to call you all to do better, to listen and do better. This incident, this assault of a black child happened mid-week. Which means that you all, as a board, had time to rearrange your schedule to prioritize the safety of a black child. And you did not do so. Instead, you referred to white supremacy with your agenda and you cut this mother off when she tried to speak. You all have not done what you needed to do. The principal and the notice that was sent out to parents called this a physical altercation, which is not true. In reality, this was an anti-black hate crime. You will not be able to minimize the rampant anti-blackness that you have allowed to fester in the schools throughout this district. And you must act with urgency. You must provide culturally relevant resources to the family. You must work towards real repair, which is more than a three-day suspension. And you must give this family access to community services and mental health. But I want to make clear that counseling does not solve a racist and violent environment. No therapy will be able to resolve an anti-black climate. That is where you all have to do your jobs and protect this child and his family. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Tara Kobian.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
My name is Tara Kobian. I too stand in community with Leandra, the concerned mother of a child who was a victim to the anti-black hate crime, which occurred this Wednesday. I believe that both Santa Barbara Junior High and the Santa Barbara School District are failing their students and families. By not providing any mental health support for both the impacted black student and their family. Following this extremely traumatizing event that occurred on school grounds. Time and time again, there is a lack of accountability by both the schools and the school district around anti-blackness violence and hate crimes. This family and student deserves this trauma to be taken seriously. How can it be expected for a student to succeed when recovering from this violence? There is nothing being done by the school or district to prevent this from happening in the future. Or to help the family recover from this hate crime. Black children deserve better. For this violence to occur upon a child in an environment that is meant for learning. I ask, what would you do if your voice was silenced when all you wanted was to protect your child? Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next speaker is Wendy Aguilera.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you, President Muñoz, Superintendent Maldonado, Cabinet members and board members. My name is Wendy Aguilera and my comment is also to support Ms. Leandra, her son and her family. Superintendent Maldonado, your opening words mentioned something along the lines of. Being dedicated to the health and safety or health and wellness of all students. And I'd like to ask everyone here present, if that excludes our black children, our black students and our black families. The hate crime and the anti-blackness Ms. Leandra's son faced should not be tolerated. It is a shame and it is unacceptable that this black mother has to bring this incident to your attention through here. Because nothing was done to address it at Santa Barbara Junior High. Replicating or a dramatization or a quote joke. Of an anti-black and hate crime is a hate crime itself. It is not a joke when a child is bullied, terrorized and potentially fears for his, for his life daily and throughout their education. Where is the health and safety for our black children, for our black students? How will the district and more so Santa Barbara Junior High properly address this matter? We demand Ms. Leandra to be heard, to be seen, to be understood. We demand resources, especially to mental health professionals and also behavior specialists for all students involved. And better trained campus safety staff. Because where were all the adults while this attack happened? How can we trust that our children are safe in our schools? You need to do better.
Thank you. Next speaker is Dr. David Moore.
Thank you. Yes, I'm David Moore. I lead Santa Barbara's beloved community church. To Superintendent Maldonado and President Muñoz and the entire board. I'm here because Leandra and her family need to be seen and need to be heard. Some of you will recognize the name Ruby Bridges. She is famous for integrating her school in New Orleans while accompanied by federal marshals. I was born the same year as Sister Ruby. I didn't need marshals, but I integrated my San Francisco school as a kindergartner. And I guess it's because we were so little that other kindergarteners did not mistreat me. But my teacher mistreated me and some of the later teachers mistreated me. By the time I was in the fourth grade, the kids had absorbed the anger of the white adults. And they started to pick fights with me. It's truly disappointing to note that an African-American child, over 60 years later than when I was in that place. Risks being traumatized in the same way I was. I appeal to the grownups on this call to step up and intervene. Children without guidance can be vicious and it's passed down to them by the adults. Adults are responsible for curing this disorder of territoriality. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Next speaker, Anna Garcia.
Yes, hi. I'm calling as a Latina in solidarity with Leandra and her son. To amplify the need for resources and support be made available immediately. The needs of the student who was assaulted and his family must be centered and prioritized. We also want to know, how are this student and other black students remaining on the campus and in the district being protected? This hate crime also speaks to the need for more transparent communication from the administration with parents and families. And it also makes it clear that continued education rooted in anti-racism. That centers uprooting anti-blackness from all communities and from district policies and practices is critical. There is also. Critical repair that is needed. And it's your job to take action to move toward that repair. Based on what the family of the impacted, what the impacted family and the child who suffered this trauma need. Make school safe for our black students so that they can also thrive.
Thank you. Next speaker is Chelsea Lancaster.
Dr. Bettina Love names the ongoing spirit murdering of black children in our schools. Your murdering is the race-centered violence that kills black children on a daily basis by either murdering them in the streets. Taking their bodies or murdering their spirits, taking their soul. Here murdering within a school context is the denial of inclusion, protection, safety, nurturance and acceptance. Because of fixed yet fluid and moldable structures of racism. This is what we have seen and experienced at Santa Barbara Unified. And frankly, in the institution that I work at, Santa Barbara City College, over and over again. It is our responsibility to take action to protect the lives and souls of our black children. They are beloved in our community. They deserve protection. They deserve to be uplifted and safe and nurtured in their brilliance. You don't get to, to give proclamations at the beginning of the month and then sit silently. While one of our, our black children is attacked 21 days later. I also want to name that anti-black violence is, as Anna Garcia named, very present in our Latina community as well. And if we don't explicitly name that, and if we don't explicitly call this a hate crime. On the day that Ahmad Arbory's killers were convicted of a hate crime, then we continue the cycle.
Thank you. Next speaker is Crystal Seegar.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, hello, board. My name is Crystal Farmer Seegar, one of the founders of Healing Justice SB. I am saddened, disheartened that I am here to speak in regards to such an anti-black and racist hate crime. And I'm here to support and uplift Leandra, a black mother and her family that has been impacted by this horrifying situation at Santa Barbara Junior High. As stated by others, the school's response and their handling of the situation is completely unacceptable. A hate crime this extreme should have been addressed in a more appropriate manner. There should have been a statement that went out via Parents Square district-wide. And a safety plan rooted in restorative justice should have been created for the impacted student and their family. As of now, this family is contemplating a school transfer, has not been provided any mental health support services. And even during the student's break after the incident occurred, the student continued to face harassment and bullying in regards to the suspension. Of the kids that violently attacked and harassed them. The district needs better policies in place to address these issues. There needs to be more staff and new positions created that are equipped with the proper training to handle these situations. We are hearing that this has been many incidents at Santa Barbara Junior High that are creating unsafe environments for both staff and students. And what is being done about this? We need mental health care providers. We need onsite social workers. We need to partner with community organizations that center restorative justice practices. And we need to listen and include black parents in these conversations. Especially because our schools continue to show anti-black racist behavior. Black folks deserve better. The black community is here and we are waiting your response. Do the right thing.
Thank you. Next speaker is Sheridan Rosenberg.
Hello, well, it, it sounds as if against. The advice of so many parents who were concerned, I pulled my daughter out of Santa Barbara High School because it was too violent and too dangerous. Santa Barbara Junior High certainly wasn't any better. And here we are. And what you did is you removed the campus SRO, law enforcement, which is there to protect all children. To make it safe. And you should be partnering with the county for mental health care services. I strongly suggest that you reach out to City of Santa Barbara Police Department and the Sheriff's Department. And I think it's time to put the SROs back on campus, especially Santa Barbara Junior High and Santa Barbara High School, as well as San Marcos. And I would really suggest recruiting SROs of color. If that's really the issue here and parents and students are concerned. That they want a safe adult who can protect them from violence and someone who they feel safe with. I think you need to go right back to the drawing board. And go back and work in partnership with the Sheriff's Department and the Police Department. And the County of Santa Barbara for mental health care services. It's long overdue. I certainly, as soon as you removed the SROs, I thought, nothing good is going to come out of this. And now we're hearing that there's more violence and this poor family is really suffering. You know, you did a bad thing. Reverse course. Stop making bad decisions that put our children in harms way.
Thank you. Next speaker is Lisa Velez.
Yes, hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, hi, I was just calling. So I have two students who are in the Santa Barbara Unified School District. I myself was part of the Santa Barbara Unified School District. Sorry. I'm calling on behalf of Leandra and her son. I was recently informed of the situation that happened and I know that personally. I know him personally and just to hear of the assault of a hate crime that he was a part of. Which this was an assault and hate crime. And to know that no action was, no support from the school. And as a school, we don't, we know it all takes a village. So that school should have immediately contacted each one of you board members to let you know what occurred on campus. These kids should be able to go to school to feel safe and to know that this, this poor child, the student, your student, a student. Has not feel safe to get dropped off. To go to school, to get an education, to learn. To know that he was violated, this family was violated. I praise Leandra. Because she is his voice and so many parents and so many students don't use their voice. Because they're scared, but they don't want to cause problems. They brush it under the rug, but that's the problem. We can't brush it under the rug anymore. And action needs to be taken. And support needs to be given to this family. The trauma that has caused this poor child.
Thank you. Next speaker is Lucy Oliver. Lucy Oliver, are you there? Lucy Oliver, are you there? Can you please unmute yourself?
Hi, Santa Barbara School District. Santa Barbara Unified has been doing restorative justice for over ten years, and it does not work. They have also been addressing mental health for years, and it is going in the opposite direction, as it should. They are causing depression, mental illness, and a lot of stress to students because the problem is there is no discipline, and you cannot address mental illness without discipline. Bring back the discipline. Bring back the SROs. Also, CRT being taught to us has created these hate crimes in the school. I see it every day. I feel it every day. Stop dividing us students. Bring discipline back to our schools so our schools can be safe. Stop allowing crimes against students and get the admin, the administration to do their job. All students need to be kept safe. Again, all students need to be safe. Please bring back our SROs.
Thank you. Next speaker is Ana Rosa Riso Centino.
Hi, yes, my name is Ana Rosa Riso Centino. I use her pronouns. And I am secretary on the board of La Casa de la Raza, and I'm calling in solidarity with Leandra and her son, and saying that the lack of SROs is not the issue. It's the culture of anti-blackness that is the issue here, and the lack of procedure, the lack of resources that were given to this family. And in this time of Black History Month, you cannot just hide behind pretty words. We need action on behalf of all of you. We cannot allow another Black child to be harmed in our community. It is not okay, and we will not stand for it. As a parent, I will not stand for it. And I just, my heart hurts. My heart hurts for the student, for all the Black kids that have already had to face this throughout the Central Coast. It's unacceptable, and it has to stop.
Thank you. Next speaker is James Joyce.
Good evening, Chair Munoz, Board Members, Superintendent Maldonado, James Joyce here. A pleasure to be able to stand in support of Leandra and her son, who are dealing with this unfortunate and preventable anti-black hate crime. You've heard the blueprint as to what the community, who's come together on this incident. You've heard the blueprint as to what the request is. There's no need for me to re-articulate that here. You've heard the request more than three times, and you all are educators, so you know that I'm sure it's stuck by now. So I would be wasting time. These aren't isolated incidents. These are incidents that are interconnected. You've heard a lot of the speakers connect to incidents outside of our community. That means that this is a global issue that we need to address. But we all know that all politics are local, and so the expectation is that the ball is now in your court. You've been put on alert that this is, the community is aware of this. We're displeased with the handling of it thus far, and there's an opportunity to correct course. And so these isolate, or these unisolated events require an unisolated response. And so make sure that the processes and procedures are put into place in order to make sure that all the support is, that is needed to prevent these events from happening in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Lena Mallett.
I am also calling in today to stand in solidarity with Leandra and her son, who, like others, have already highlighted was the victim of a violent anti-black hate crime. I am both ashamed and outraged by the lacking support and consideration for the young Black man and his family who have been failed and whose trauma has been utterly disregarded. Mental health support and comprehensive mental health support for the student and his family ought to be made available immediately, and the district must show accountability for their lacking dedication to protecting their Black students. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Sebastian Seegert. Sebastian Seegert, can you please unmute yourself?
In response to the highly misinformed and incompetent people saying that restorative justice practices and CRT isn't helping our schools. Hi. In response to the highly misinformed and incompetent people saying that restorative justice.
You can mute your devices in the background.
Sandra, excuse me. We can hear her in the boardroom. I'm not sure if there's a problem.
Okay, can you hear me now?
Yes, we could hear you in the boardroom.
Okay. In response to the highly misinformed and incompetent people saying that restorative justice practices and CRT isn't helping our schools, please seek help. Y'all are not well. Per the Santa Barbara Junior High School's website, there are no current mental health care providers on staff, no onsite social workers, and the people that are hired to address these situations weren't even made aware of the incident in time to properly address it. The cops were actually notified of the situation, and the family did try to file a report. And of course, nothing was done and no report was offered. So again, SROs are not the answer. Cops do not keep our community safe. As you've seen in public comment and how we show up to support this family, we keep us safe.
Thank you. Next speaker is Zach Cosum.
Hi, I'm calling in support of Leandra and her son. We're asking for reparative justice, justice repair, not to bring police back on campus. Please don't let these white segregationists distract from the issues, and don't take steps to re-traumatize students of color. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Mark Alvarado.
Good evening, Board, and Superintendent Maldonado. I just want to remind the public that the Board has already made a decision regarding cops on campus. And as much as there are folks calling in to kind of rehash that issue, we need to move forward on other practices that are going to get us away from what has occurred and has traumatized the Shawu family, Conway family. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Justin Fresh.
Hello?
Yes, go ahead.
Yes, I would just like to also reiterate that police and schools are not the answer. They can be aggressors to the community and are biased sometimes in their views and how they view the situation. Thank you very much.
Thank you. President Munoz, that concludes public comment on this item.
Thank you, Ms. Trujillo. Okay, we will now go to the consent agenda to approve the items that are not considered routine and are not likely to require any discussion. Dr. Maldonado and her staff have recommended that the Board approves all the consent agenda items. The Board has also had an opportunity to consider and ask questions about these items before tonight. First, Ms. Trujillo, I'd like to know if there are any public comments on the consent agenda items.
No public comment.
Thank you. Before I call for a motion, Board Members, or Dr. Maldonado, are there any items on the consent agenda that require more information, comments, or discussion? Ms. Sims-Moulton?
Yes, on item twelve, I just don't know if I need to recuse myself in the out-of-state travel, potentially. So I just want to make that, know if I need to recuse or can just vote as it stands.
I don't believe you need to recuse yourself because you're going as a representative of the school board, and that's appropriate for you to vote on that, unless somebody else did you. Okay. Thank you.
Okay, any other comments? Okay, so if there's no other comments, I would like to call, can I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Okay, Ms. Sims-Moulton and Ms. Ford for a second. Okay, all in favor, please raise your hand and say aye.
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 Aye? Okay, the consent agenda passes unanimously. I think at this time, I'd like to call for a break. It's seven twenty-five. So if we could have a ten-minute break and return at seven thirty-five. We are back, and we'll proceed with the action agenda. We're going to go to action agenda, item number one.
Item F1, in the case of two zero two one two two dash two three, move approval of full expulsion to semester, which ends January twenty twenty-three.
Second. Board members, all in favor, please raise your hand and say aye.
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 Aye? Passes unanimously. Sorry, Board Agenda, item number two.
Yes. In the case of two zero two one two two I dash O three, move approval of board action on student transfer.
I second that action. Okay, Board Members, raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Okay.
All in favor.
If you're in favor, sorry, passes unanimously. Okay, we will now go to number three on the action agenda, approving of moving funds previously approved for projects on La Colina site to elementary projects.
Evening, Superintendent Maldonado, members of the Board. We're asking tonight for reconsideration for the allocation of the Measure J funds that were scheduled for the two portable classrooms formerly occupied by Open Alternative School. Previously, the Board had decided that those funds could be used on the junior high campus for those purposes. The Citizens Bond Oversight Committee has asked that that decision be revisited. They feel strongly that Measure J funds should be used for elementary students, no matter what campus they're on. And staff agrees. We're here tonight to ask you to reconsider allocating the monies for those two portables to La Colina and to instead allocate the funding for those two portables to Measure J Elementary School projects.
Okay, yes, Ms. Trujillo, is there any public comment on this item?
Thank you, President Munoz. We do have public comment on this item.
Thank you. I just, the one problem I have with moving the money from one place to another, from a bond. A bond is something that the people voted in. So when you don't repair something, or you don't fix something that people vote on, then we're, you know, what's going to happen? Do we have to vote on that again? Is it a shell game? Is it just, are we ever going to fix the things that we voted on? So I think that it's, I just think you just keep giving more money out of the people in bonds, but not doing what you're saying with them. That's not, that's not right. That's taking money from the taxpayers and putting it in a different place. It's not a good, a good practice in business. I don't think that should be done in the, in your job because you are representatives of the people. And, you know, will Laura Capps go against the people, as she always does? She always goes her own way. Will she just disregard the people's voice? So I'm saying that because she's going, trying to go for a higher office.
Sir, excuse me, we, it's a public comment of the item itself, please.
I'm just trying to say, she's a board member, and how is she going to, how is she going to vote, is what I'm saying. That's going to be interesting to see.
Mr. Trujillo?
So, thank you.
That concludes public comment on this item.
Thank you, Ms. Trujillo. Ms. Capps?
Thank you, Mr. Hedyonk, and Kim, this is, I appreciate the staff recommendation following the bond oversight and really the bond oversight committee's work. I served on one of those committees prior to running for the school board, and it's diligent work, and this is exactly why they exist. So the fact that they flagged this, you listen to them, you're accepting the recommendation, is a good part of the process, and I'm happy to support it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Alvarez?
Yes, thank you for bringing this item to our attention, and I strongly believe that we need to honor the voters' wishes, and they voted for this measure for the funds to stay at the elementary schools. And I actually agree with that a hundred percent. It should stay what the voters voted for, so thank you.
Ms. Sims-Moulton?
Yes, I agree with that, and I'm glad that it's here, and we're making sure that it has the original intent, and we're going back to that. I do have a question. As the two portables, or the four portables, were identified in need of replacements, are we going to find other sources to do that? Or is that?
So there, there were six total, so there were four that were for La Colina and two that were for the Open Alternative School. So the four will be using the secondary bond, because that's the La Colina bond. And then the other two that will be remaining, we would have to use secondary bond money for those other two. And then we would use the, that money, that nine hundred and ten K that was set aside for the OAS, we would use it with the elementary schools.
Okay, so all six will be repaired. We're just putting it in the right place. It needs to be the funding coming from. All right, I fully support that. Thank you.
Ms. Ford?
Thanks so much. As we all know, sometimes committees feel like no one's listening or that they don't have proper authority, but I'm so glad that we are listening to the Citizens Bond Committee, and I completely support this motion.
Yes, and I just want to comment that as, you know, prior to being on the Board and volunteering full-time for these bonds to be passed, I also appreciate the oversight and us complying with that, so thank you so much. Okay, if there aren't any more comments, I will ask the Board Members for a motion to approve this action item.
I move that we honor the bond committee's guidance and reallocate these funds to the elementary sites.
Ms. Capps for a second?
Second, yes.
Okay, all in favor, please raise your hand and signify by saying aye.
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 Okay, action item passes unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we will now go to action item three, approval of moving, sorry, approval of a thirty-day public review of history, social studies, textbook adoptions for grades seven, eight, ten, and eleven. Ms. Sarah Leckridge.
Good evening, Board President Munoz, Board Members, Superintendent Dr. Maldonado, and our community.
Sorry, we are not able to hear.
Good evening, can you hear me now?
No.
Brian Rouse, everybody. Good evening, Board President Munoz, Board Members, Superintendent Dr. Maldonado, and our community. Thank you for the opportunity to talk tonight about our district's pathway for social studies adoption for grades seven, eight, ten, and eleven. If you could assist with the slide deck? Perfect, now we can actually go to the next slide. This slide is a little bit of background. The state of California, specifically the California Department of Ed, has the obligation and the right to approve a social studies framework and make recommendations for districts to adopt curricula. They do this for grades K through eight, but they do not do this for grades nine through ten. They do this for grades K through eight, but they do not do this for grades nine through 10. So of the five recommendations of the current framework and adoption cycle, our district piloted and reviewed or studied and looked at four of them. The ones that you see in italicized blue are the ones that the teacher committee is recommending and that we are bringing to you tonight to request that we open it up for a 30-day public review period. So those two curricula are SAVES, formerly Pearson Scott, and Teachers Curriculum Institute, known as TCI. Next slide. This is a timeline that shows just the amount of engagement our teachers have gone through for this year. Prior to this timeline, in 2021, teachers piloted two of the other curricula that were not selected. And they were not selected because they did not meet the standards of the teachers in terms of alignment with the California State Framework, Fair Act compliance, online features that have high-quality Spanish translations and that are highly engaging, that integrate EML learning standards, and support students with disabilities. Really important to this teacher community was the quality of the translations, the integration of technology, and that multiple perspectives of history are embedded in the curricula. So we are now here in February and I am formally asking for a 30-day public comment window to be open and I look forward to coming back on April 12th with the information from those sessions and asking for an adoption. Next slide. So seventh and eighth grade teachers selected SAVES. And SAVES is highly interactive and they did so because they really wanted to make sure that kids had access to hands-on practice. And a big part of it was the experiential learning with project-based and the document-based questions. Learning history, looking at the historical documents is very important to understanding what happened and why and how we can critique that. So SAVES has its Common Core line, student-centered, and it has the small group interaction and the resources to really scaffold the reading levels, which was a big component of why SAVES was selected for seventh and eighth. Next window. Likewise, the Teachers Curriculum Institute was selected for 10th and 11 based on the alignment of the Common Core and because of the student-centered model. A particular note for this was the mock trials. These are highly engaging to students and the type of engagement that came from the pilot was palpable and this is what they want to be able to bring, that sense of civic engagement, bringing history to life, looking at primary sources, looking at actual court cases, and really looking, making history come alive. So this is the curriculum that they would like to put forward for public review and ultimately your approval. Next slide. Of utmost important and in alignment with our access and inclusion and equity lens is how do we support our emergent multilingual students and our students with disabilities? Both of these curriculums outscored the other four or five that are on the state list because of this ability, especially with the graphics and the highlighting and the text-to-speech functions of SAVES and a lot of supports with vocabulary and authentic Spanish translation. That was a big selling point for SAVES. Likewise, for TCI, the differentiation that can occur because of the scaffolding was really, really valued by teachers as well as the e-text and the vocabulary features. One of the important things to note is both of these books can be downloaded on the students' iPads, so even if you don't have internet connection, you can still access all the resources. And so this is a big equity push for us as well to ensure that no matter where you are, you can have access to learning at your pace. And next slide. Curriculum and instruction go hand-in-hand with assessment and teachers need resources to do this thoughtfully in a way that prepares them for college in the future. And as such, SAVES has formative assessments and summative assessments with online quizzes that can give immediately, immediate feedback so the teacher can see in real time if they're getting the concepts, as well as assessments that have enrichment activities for kids that need acceleration or remediation. All of TCIs are likewise standard-aligned. Students actually set their own goals and do some thinking about their thinking, part of being engaged. And it has a lot of different formative responses, including more writing activities, which we know that all of our kids need to be prepared for the demands of college and career. Next slide. This is probably the most important slide. Culturally responsive social studies, teaching, and learning. Multiple perspectives, inclusion, things that we know we have to bring to our kids and talk about and engage in. And both of these curricula do this through primary sources, through interviews, through even some visualization of what it was like back then. So the primary source documents are there. A wide variety of voices and perspectives are included. And they are both committed to highlighting the voices of underrepresented people and really digging into the history that we'd have to be honest and upfront about. Both are fair and both are accurate and they are, meet the California Department of Ed standards and are aligned with the framework and the Fair Act. Next slide. Here is a slide that kind of says what the teachers that participated in the pilot thought. I will let you read it, but basically that last box about the deeper dive, that's it. We need to go deeper, we need to be truer, and we need to live up to the words in our hearts, what we all know to do. Next slide. So this is the pathway to adoption and the reason I'm here speaking with you all tonight is I am formally requesting a 30-day public viewing window to start tomorrow. And actually, it will go a little bit longer because we won't be able to come back to you till April 12th. But we will make available those materials in print upstairs in Ed Services. You can contact Alma Flores and we'll make sure you can look at those. Additionally, we are hosting two community sessions, one on Thursday, March 3rd at 6:00 PM. It'll be myself and Lindsay Woodard, our new instructional support specialist, who is stepping in for Helen Murdock and has already met with all the teachers and is ready to take charge in that area. And for those who can't join at night, we have a Monday morning session on the 14th at 12:00 PM. After the 30-day weekend and after spring break, we will come back to you with a request, we anticipate for formal adoption on April 12th. That concludes my presentation on the pathway to social studies adoption for grades seventh, eighth, 10th, and 11th. And I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Okay, Ms. Trujillo, do we have any public comment on this item?
No public comment on this item.
Okay, thank you. Board members, Ms. Capps?
Yeah, thank you, Ms. Lefridge. I wanted to just delve in a bit, if you wouldn't mind, on the teacher involvement in choosing of this. We sometimes get concerning letters that teachers are not listened to and are never asked for input. So I'm hoping you can just expound on what was the process?
Sure.
By which they were, how many teachers, et cetera, just so I can get a better understanding.
Yes, let's see. So this started in 2021 with Helen Murdock and a request went out to see who was interested. Immediately, she had 27 junior high teachers, one from representing all the schools, and 18 high school teachers joined the pilot at the end that started this year, 21, 22. So they had a chance to participate in June PL Week and were compensated at their daily rate to look and meet with TCI and SAVES representatives and to do some shared lesson planning. Then over the series of this year, they had a webinar with the vendor, discussed it in their PLCs, and Helen Murdock, you know, has left. She met and did several meetings with them and myself included so that we could really hear their voice. She also conducted a teacher survey and a student survey just based on what they were experiencing that year in social studies and we have that data as well.
Is this a pretty common practice when it comes to curriculum? It seems from other curriculum that this board has approved that this is standard.
It's similar to the process that we did with leucotic math in that we actually tried the material out and we got those early adopters, so to speak, to come on board with us and to provide feedback. It varies a little in the sense that for this one, they actually tried almost all of the ones on the state adopted list and this board should know that there is a new framework that's slightly delayed because of COVID but will likely come out in 2023, which means that the state will approve new material in 2028. And, you know, having conversations with Sean Carey and Dr. Maldonado, we knew our students couldn't wait that long to have better curriculum in front of them. So what we will be bringing to you is a short window of adoption so that we're aligned with that new framework and the new recommendations that may be coming down from CDE in 2028. So instead of an eight-year cycle, we'll look at six.
Okay, thanks for that information. Just one last question, is it generally the same teachers that tend to volunteer to be part of these processes of choosing curriculum? Or is it, in your experience, varied?
That's an interesting question. Oftentimes, in anything, the people that volunteer are usually very invested and want to have their voice said. But this is a really high number of teachers for secondary schools. If you think about it, 27 junior high teachers, you know, from four schools, that's a good representation of seventh and eighth. And they've had a lot of conversations with their PLCs, including having to make a choice. Would it be SAVES? Would it be TCI? Where would we be? And it's interesting that seventh and eighth went with SAVES for the interactive and the Spanish and 10th and 11th really went with TCI for the deep dive and the writing piece.
Yep.
So it kind of makes sense of who they're serving and where their kids are at developmentally.
Thank you. Yeah, well, that's assuring information, thank you.
You're welcome.
Ms. Ford?
Thank you so much. Could we go back to the timeline?
Sure.
I'm just wondering if I read it incorrectly or if it needs to be corrected.
Let's see.
Because those, the second and third box say 2022, that would be in the future. I'm thinking these things have happened.
That is a great catch. It should be 2021 and we are in 2022, so that does need to be corrected.
So October, I mean, the second and third should be 2021.
Correct. It should read June 2021, August, October 21, October, December 21. We'll make that correction.
Okay, great. And I'll just add for my board's interest, my first credential is a lifetime social studies credential and I would have loved to have taught either one of these, they look fantastic.
Thank you. And come upstairs and see them if you like.
Ms. Alvarez? I thought you were leaving. I said, wait, wait, come back.
I'll stay for you.
Yes, thank you. Well, thank you very much for your presentation, number one, and thank you to all those 19 teachers who collaborated in this important work. It's really important to get their input, so thank you. And a couple of questions. So we're having two sessions through Zoom, right? For the public to review the materials if they wish. How are we going to get the message out to the communities that they can participate?
So after the approval of the open 30-day window, like we have done with other adoptions, we will send out a parent square announcing those opportunities, letting them know that they are available upstairs. And both of the publishers assured us that they would give us a trial link to see their objects virtually, so families can also view it through and we'll include all that in the message once the window is open.
And I see that it's translated into Spanish, so I'm thinking the teachers that preview this materials are fluent in Spanish as well, is that correct?
I can't speak to all the teachers' levels of Spanish fluency. There are some that probably were. But the way that the data came back in the survey was that it was a high-quality Spanish translation. So clearly, some folks knew very well that it was, you know, the difference between writing something first or writing in this, yeah.
Great, thank you. And then it seemed the expense is $726,217. I'm glad that we're using some of our restricted lottery monies. Is that expenditure this current fiscal year? Are we expecting it to be this, part this year and part the following year?
We will be coming back and asking for that for this year with a six-year license. Using those restricted funds, which you rightly pointed out, are dedicated for textbooks and adoptions. Normally, it's about an eight-year adoption cycle, but due to the factors of a new framework coming out in 2023 and the Board of Ed recommendations for publishers in 2028, we're just trying to time it right so that we can engage and make sure that we have the right curriculum ahead of time next time.
Then one more question that I thought about while you were speaking. I think it's wonderful that this information will be in the iPads. Are the iPads, does the, have enough memory to have these books plus everything else that the students have in there?
I would think so, but I'm looking at Brian.
The students have already been piloting these platforms on their iPads as it stands and have so far been successful.
Great, thank you. I have no other questions. Okay, I'm definitely, oh, sorry, Ms. Sims-Moten?
No problem. Thank you, thank you for the presentations and I appreciate the questions that are asked by my sister board members. I had a question with regards to, I really appreciate the cultural urgency, I think that slide that came up there and talking about the deeper dive. Just given what we heard earlier.
Yes.
They, how critical that is, being culturally relative and how that we need to align our social studies with what's going on in our communities. And so I'm hoping that that's a piece that we, you know, that we align together when we look at this. Is it relative to the things that are going on in our communities with our students? I think there's absolutely a nexus and for myself and for our instructional support, Lindsay Woodard, we will definitely work with teachers to ensure that those conversations come up and that they are acknowledged and given the type of depth and honesty that they require. One of the unique things about them is the small group. So having that small group, something we're very familiar with in elementary, but in the secondary space could be really great to have those clusters and have people have those conversations. Yeah, because I think it's really important, we don't have to go seek incidents, they happen right here. So I think the more that we really speak to social studies and make them relative to the incidents that are happening here, then that becomes more relative. Then you're actually really having that deeper dive about what's going on in your community, right? As opposed to somewhere else. Yeah, it impacts all of us and, you know, the world is not creating a vacuum and there is definitely a legacy that needs to be addressed. And so hopefully, the, having the right tools, because our previous adoption is out of date, having the right tools will be a catalyst for the type of conversation and the type of healing that I think you're referring to. Right, and I don't want us to back away or shy away from it because it's uncomfortable. We have to face it. And this is the place, not to give you a directive like that, but I'm just saying in general to responding what is just going on, what we heard tonight and what has gone on. And hopefully that if we are starting to look at it and not shy away from it, then we'll have less of these conversations about this, you know, coming before us. It's so hard to hear tonight. And so are there things and actions that we can take within our purview and within our control to be able to affect change that way? And then my last question would be, or just, how does it or does it align with our ethnic studies at all? Is there alignment there at all? Is that two different paths? There is alignment. Our Nelson has been a part of our- R. Nelson is our instructional support specialist in charge of ethnic studies. And he's been working with this team as well. I think anytime you actually have multiple perspectives that aligns with the mission of ethnic studies. And to your point about change, you know, nothing can be changed if it's not named. So, you know, James Baldwin told us that years ago. It remains true to this day. And that's what we want to help teachers do so that we don't have the heartbreaking things that we've been hearing about happening.
I appreciate that. And I'd also, and I don't want to add any extra work on anybody, but if we can incorporate, I'd love to have, you know, given the things that are going on culturally and root cause that we have to deal with and have the ability to do and change, I'd like to see some presentations come forth, like what's happening in the classroom, such as presentations about that when the principals are updating what's going on. Can it be incorporated in there? Not extra. But something to think about as we talk about these things here, that how have we changed? And what are we doing? What activities are we doing within our classrooms as principals or talking about the things that are going on on their campuses? Not extra, but just, you know, something to consider adding in their presentation. That would be great.
I think we're all eager to get back to that core work.
I know. Thank you.
Yes, I just wanted to, of course, you know, support my fellow board members and certainly the conversation, the concerns that Ms. Sims-Moten is bringing up and how that happens, how our community and mirror that so that those conversations will come up. You know, we have students here that are, you know, Schumash, that are biracial, that are African-American and Latino, that are Latino in Philippines. So just, you know, that kind of inclusivity is so important, as I'm sure you would agree. I would also like to look at how, you know, it applies to students, this curriculum, to students with disabilities and the dual language. One question I had is the materials that we can review. I'm assuming that they will be available in Spanish.
Well, both of these curricula have full, solid Spanish translations. So our DLI school, which I'm glad you brought up, at Santa Barbara Junior High, will have access to the materials in high-quality Spanish. Not translated on the backend or Google translated, but high-quality Spanish as a first narrative to their journey into understanding, you know, the world around them in social studies.
Yes, excellent.
Sierra, can you clarify? Will those be printed or online?
So for the DLI, we will be buying the Spanish books. But the other ones will be in English with the ability to translate. We're, per Williams, have a class set. And we'll have additional ones in both libraries, at the junior high and at the high school. The budget projected is like 50 extra ones for the library and I think 100 at the high school level. And that's why it's the $700,000 price tag, but it also includes the renewals for the six years. We did ask for different projections. We looked at four, six, and eight. I believe we'll be bringing forward the six to you.
Great, thank you. Mr. Kelly?
Yeah, thank you so much for your presentation. All of the questions I had were answered by what my fellow board members asked. I'm so grateful that we are thinking more about culturally responsive social studies teaching. Often, the history that we learn and most of the history that I've learned has been from the perspective of a white male. So I think it is important that we are understanding all sides and can actually become educated. And we're changing what education means, just hearing what everyone felt and how it's affecting people still to this day. So thank you so much for all you do.
My pleasure.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
There are no further questions. I'd like to request a motion.
So moved.
Ms. Ford for a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor, please raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. We'll see you on the 12th.
Okay, we will now go to action item five, approval of resolution number 2021-22-22, recognizing March as Women's History Month.
Board members, we are bringing this resolution to you this evening to recognize March as Women's History Month. And I understand that you will be reading the resolution, starting with you, President Muñoz.
Okay, thank you. Whereas the advocacy efforts of the National Women's History Project led to an annual observance of Women's History Month, which highlights the contributions of women to events in history and contemporary society and is celebrated during March in the United States, and...
Whereas women of every race, class, and ethnic background have made significant and historic contributions to the growth and strength of our society in countless recorded and unrecorded ways, and...
Whereas, for the first time in our nation's history, we have elected, we have an elected woman vice president serving in office, and...
Whereas, our great state of California was the sixth state in the nation to give women the right to vote in 1911, nearly a decade before the 19th Amendment was ratified to the United States Constitution, and...
Whereas, the leadership of women in elected office, including the contributions of our own Board of Education trustees, city council members, county board members, and county supervisors, serves as an example of community and civic engagement for girls and women in our county, and...
Whereas, nearly 76% of all public school teachers are women. 54% of public school administrators are women. Yet only 27% of district superintendents are women, and...
Whereas, women have been leaders not only in securing their own rights of suffrage and equal opportunity, but also in the abolitionist movement, the emancipation movement, the industrial labor movement, the civil rights movement, which create a fair and just society for all, and...
Whereas, women have played and continue to play critical economic, cultural, and social role in every sphere of life of our nation by constituting a significant portion of the labor force working inside and outside of the home, and...
Whereas, despite these contributions, the role of women in history has been consistently overlooked and undervalued in the literature, teaching, labor, business, and in study of history, and...
Whereas, there are currently no monuments honoring women in the city of Santa Barbara, and...
Whereas, Santa Barbara High School supports and promotes extracurricular opportunities for students to participate in. For example, championship wrestler Pepper Marks and the cram founder Olivia Seltzer, and...
Whereas, Dos Pueblos High School empowers and prepares females for careers in STEM fields, including engineering, computer science, product development, and manufacturing through the Dos Pueblos Engineering Academy, a career technical education program that enrolls 50% young women annually and teaches students to use industry-standard equipment, software, and machinery to create professional products within its four-year project-based curriculum. Approximately 500 women have graduated from the DPEA in its 20-year history. And over 80% of them have pursued careers in STEM fields, and...
Whereas, San Marcos High School was the first school to have a female drum major for its outstanding band program in 1992. And the tradition continues this year with its current female drum major, and...
Whereas Franklin Elementary offers girls felicrio, and Cleveland offers girls who code as extended opportunities in the arts and technology, and...
Whereas, the Santa Barbara Unified School District has encouraged pathways for girls to pursue science, technology, engineering, arts, and mathematics careers and the underrepresentation of women in non-traditional careers by supporting teachers through professional development, and...
Whereas, the Santa Barbara Unified School District's team of 17 principals is 76.5 female, while also having the second female superintendent in its long history, and...
Whereas, additional education is needed to increase the knowledge of all citizens relative to the contributions of women and opportunities for girls and women to develop their leadership skills and to eliminate bias in education and the workforce, and...
It is hereby resolved that the Santa Barbara Unified School District honors the contributions that women have made throughout history and commit to support efforts to improve opportunities for girls and women.
I would like to express my appreciation to all that worked on this resolution in recognition of Women's History Month. And Mr. Hio, do we have any public comment?
Thank you, President Muñoz. We do have public comment. Maria Kastner? If you can, please turn off your sound on the background. We can hear you better.
Okay, so the only problem is, according to the Democrats, under the Equality Act, the definition of what is a woman is up for grabs. We now have trans individuals like Leah Thomas setting records, breaking, shattering records against women. And instead of expanding rights, which I think trans people should be protected under the law, the Democrats have now voted in legislation that encroaches on women and girls' rights. And this has never happened before. We have, throughout American history, rights have been expanded to all kinds of disenfranchised historical groups. And now, it's just, it's just a stunning development. I also wanted to point out, one school teacher did expose the curriculum of the Santa Barbara Unified School District. And it is pushing for a group like BLM. And BLM did have a link to Act Blue on their website, and it is thus a political organization. And under the protection of people's rights, no student shall be required as part of a political program to submit to a survey analysis or evaluation that reveals information concerning political allegations or beliefs of a student or the student's parents. And so...
President Muñoz, that concludes public comment on this item.
Okay, thank you. Board members, questions or comments? Ms. Sims-Moten?
Yes, I am so appreciative to be a part of recognizing March as Women's History Month and proudly part of the history that kind of goes on in this county. But also, when we talked about monuments, I know there's a county building named for Naomi Schwartz. So would that be considered in terms of that? There's a county building for her name. I don't know that there are any other women. Is that, you know, just as we're recognizing that? That's my comment.
Certainly. Thank you, Ms. Sims-Moten. Any other questions or comments? Okay, may I have a motion to approve this item? Ms. Ford?
Thank you so much. I'd like to make a motion to approve... Oh, my gosh, I'm on the wrong one. Approve resolution number 2021-22-22, recognizing March as Women's History Month.
Second.
Okay, all in favor, please signify by raising your hand and saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pass, this motion passes unanimously. We will now go to the report discussion agenda for the sustainability report, number two.
President Muñoz, Dr. Maldonado, board members, thank you for your time this evening. Is my presentation being progressed, or do I need to share a screen?
It will be presented. I would like to introduce Desmond Ho, our sustainability coordinator. It's okay. Go ahead and proceed.
Well, thank you again. My name is Desmond Ho. I'm the operation and sustainability coordinator. Next slide, please. So in my presentation today, I'll be providing an update on what I've been working on in the last six months. The topics fall into the following five categories. We have energy and associated audits, grants, food service and Senate Bill 1383 compliance, working with teachers and students, as well as facilities improvements. Next slide, please. So one of the first things that I did was establish relationships with our representative from Southern California Edison, SoCal Gas, City of Santa Barbara, as well as the City of Glalito Water, as well as Marbork. So after a thorough review of our utility bills, I noticed that we were incorrectly charged a tax called the utility user tax on a number of our accounts. And this tax actually amounts to about $10,000 to $12,000 per year. And I've obtained a letter from the City of Santa Barbara exempting us so that this tax will stop. And I'll be working with them to obtain a refund for at least the last year, although I'll be attempting for additional years as well. In addition to our utility representative, I also partnered SB Unified with the Southern California Regional Energy Network, also hereby known as SoCal Ren. It's an organization that provides a free service to analyze our energy use on a building square footage basis. SoCal Ren has completed a comparative energy analysis report, which benchmarks our buildings against other buildings with similar square footage so we can see where we stand in terms of energy efficiency. So the graph that you're seeing on the right shows our highest energy using buildings compared to equivalent buildings. So the green bars shows the 2019 data, whereas the blue bars are showing 2020 data. That turquoise line is what comparable buildings average. So you'll see that the district office slash LaCuesta High School, Dos Pueblos, and San Marcos High Schools are the buildings that are using the most energy or more energy than comparable buildings. Therefore, we'll be scheduling an audit that will be funded by SoCal Ren to help us understand why this is and also find out what we can do to help reduce our energy consumption there. I'm also pushing for SoCal Ren to fund a full analysis of the district's HVAC control systems as it is fairly old and could be significantly improved. Finally, we're enrolled into what's called the Energy Star Portfolio Manager, which where all of our utility datas are going to be automatically fed into the platform. So it's going to allow me to see the real-time data without having to manually input it into a spreadsheet monthly. Next slide, please. So moving into grants and incentives, the first major funds that I've applied for is, comes from Assembly Bill 841, which is a grant that goes towards HVAC and plumbing system upgrades and retrofits. So I surveyed all the eligible school sites, which in this case are those that are designated by the state as low income for their HVAC and plumbing fixtures. This was a pretty rewarding experience because I got to work with the plumbers and the HVAC technicians, got a chance to see where all the systems are located and got to know the sites a lot better. We ended up applying for $194,000 and a $418,000 grant so that we can do a full site analysis on plumbing and HVAC control systems, do some retrofits, and then apply for round two of funding. This round two is going to be significantly more and will hopefully allow us to change out some of our old systems. In addition to the AB 841 funds, your board approved the pool covers for the high school in December. And as soon as those covers arrive, I will be getting a rebate that will cut the cost of the covers by approximately 50%. In the hopper, we have another round of AB 841 funds, which may arrive in March. One potential update is now maybe open to all school sites regardless of the low-income designation. This is still in development, so I'll be providing an update as soon as I can find out. For this summer, I plan on applying for two grants from the Santa Barbara County Air Pollution Control District. One is to help replace an aging diesel tractor with an electric one. I contacted one of the two manufacturers and have scheduled a demonstration for our grounds folks in March. This hopefully gives them a hands-on experience to test it so that they can approve it to make sure that it's going to work for them prior to the grant. In parallel with the tractor grant, I'll be also applying for the Air Pollution Control District grant for charging infrastructure as we need a way to charge tractor and also determine whether we can apply for the grant at the same time for charging stations at our completed solar sites in Park Lots. Lastly, the pool boilers at Dos Pueblos and San Marcos High School are on their last legs. So I am working with SoCal Gas on a rebate for new boilers and determining whether more efficient boilers are cost-effective and to use SoCal Gas's interest-free financing into paying for the new boilers. Once I have those details, I will bring it to the board. Next slide, please. So one of the earliest projects that I worked on was actually with food service to move meal service back indoors. Due to the rules that are set by Public Health, meals that are served outdoors must be covered and contained. Therefore, hundreds of thousands of meals... and contained, therefore hundreds of thousands of meals had to be individually wrapped and packaged. Now, working with kitchen managers, principals, and custodial staff at La Colina, we actually piloted three different methods of serving students indoors to maximize efficiency, reintroduced shared tables where students can leave milk and other food items that they don't want, and also reduced our plastic and food waste. So the picture that you see here is the final system that was mirrored at Galita Valley Junior High. At both sites, the students were served significantly less time, allowing more eating and socializing time. They were reducing packaging time by about six hours. And then custodial reported reduced trash outside by about 50 to 75%, and then we reduced the amount of plastic used significantly. With Franklin and McKinley Elementary Schools also serving their students inside, we're reducing the plastic use for packaging for about 50,000 meals per month. So I'll continue to work with food service principals and custodial staff at other sites so that we can continue to reduce our waste. Next slide, please. So continue on the theme about food. On January 1st of this year, regulations from California State Senate Bill 1383 took effect. So this bill actually aims at reducing methane emissions from landfills by mandating commercial and municipal entities to divert some of their food waste generated on-site. So the goal of the bill is for the sites to divert their food waste into marked compost bins as opposed to the trash. With Marburg's new anaerobic digester facility, having this clean, uncontaminated compost allows it to churn out quality topsoils, and its operations will consume 99% of the methane that is generated as opposed to being vented into the atmosphere. I have been working with the waste lead person at the City of Santa Barbara. We've went to every single school site, discussed with the food service staff, as well as the custodial staff on what their needs are, and are in the process of swapping out old and broken compost bins for new ones. We also provided kitchens with extra bins as needed, and educated the staff on what can and cannot go inside the compost bins. As of now, the kitchens have exactly what they need to comply with the bill, and SB Unified is considered under compliance under the bill. Lastly, I've been coordinating with Explore Ecology and the On-Site Gardens, because they often require food scraps for the worm bins to operate. Therefore, diverting some more of that food waste to the respective site's gardens is going to provide valuable education to the students. Next slide, please. So with regards to working with students and teachers, I have been collaborating with Nellie Hill, who is a science teacher on special assignment for the secondary schools on a teacher professional development program for next school year. So the goal of this program is to connect the Santa Barbara Botanic Garden, its staff, with our teachers and our custodial and ground staff at the secondary school sites, so they have a better understanding on what the local watershed is like, the impacts of invasive species, the roles of native species, and how staff's action on campuses can actually have impacts on our local watersheds. I've also been collaborating with Santa Barbara, as well as DP High School students and teachers, on implementing a small-scale food composting program that aims to educate students on how to properly dispose of food scraps. This is an ongoing program, and hopefully will be expanded in the next school year. Food Service Director Matt Dittman and I presented to the Santa Barbara High School Honor Society regarding Senate Bill 1383, talked a little bit about how the food services program is run, and we solicited ideas from students on how we can improve food service as well as reducing food waste. I also regularly meet with Jose Caballero, the AP Environmental Studies teacher at Santa Barbara High School that leads the garden and horticulture program to continue working on food waste. Finally, Santa Barbara Junior High School is one of the last school facilities without a school garden. So I've been collaborating with Principal Curry, the lead teacher, and also in outside organizations on finding the best location for the garden, as well as figuring out logistics to make the garden a reality. Next slide, please. Finally, I'd like to update the board on facilities improvements that have been completed or ongoing or planned. So one of the first projects that I did was an analysis of Santa Barbara Junior High School's field lights. Those lights were in terrible disrepair, and were originally slated to only have the broken lights replaced with LEDs. Through a cost-benefit analysis that I did, I was able to show that a complete retrofit of the lights would ultimately save the school district in the long run, as well as provide better lighting for the users of the field. The next project are the pool covers. Those have been ordered, but due to supply chain issues, they're not slated to arrive until maybe mid to late March. This project is expected to save the school district about $150,000 a year in fuel, water, and chemical costs. Ongoing projects include the conversion of our maintenance and operations work order system, and the replacement of the pool boilers at both DP and San Marcos High School. The current work order system, called School Dude, is antiquated. It does not allow for analytics and forces maintenance and operations to print all of the work orders out multiple times, wasting a ton of paper and staff time. We are looking to potentially convert to Facilitron, which we are currently using for civic use rentals, and will allow everything to be done electronically, saving paper, and will allow for analytics, improving management of staff time. We're currently waiting and working with ETS to vet the program, so as soon as that process is done, I will be bringing this item to your board. The two pool boilers at the, sorry, the pool boilers at the two high schools are beyond their service life right now. They are breaking down and will need replacement. So I am working on a return on investment calculation on purchasing high-efficiency boilers that cost more upfront, but will be cheaper in the long run, and reduce the emissions that are generated. Finally, for the summer, I'll be pursuing those two Air Pollution Control District grants for the charging stations and the electric tractors that I previously talked about, and I'll continue to keep my eyes and ears open for grant funding opportunities throughout the year. Thank you so much for your time, and I'm happy to take any questions that you may have.
Oh, yes. Ms. Truho, do we have any public comments, sorry, public comments on this item?
No public comment on this item.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Ford?
Thank you so much. Thank you, Desmond, for this report. I, dare I say, this sounds like more than a full-time job. Super impressed. I know that the board had such high hopes when we followed the committee and Laura Capps' recommendation to make this position. Feel very proud. Just, just so everyone knows, I wonder if you could tell us, when you started in the job, what your degrees are, and what brought you to, what experience you've had to bring you to this position?
Sure. I have a Bachelor's of Science in Biology from San Diego State University, and I actually went out to Catalina Island, CEME, the group that a lot of students go to, and I taught marine sciences out there for many years. So education and sustainability has always been something that's on my mind. I came to UCSB at the Bren School of Environmental Science and Management to get my master's, and ever since then, I've wanted to combine education and sustainability. So this is a very, it's the job that I've always wanted, to work on sustainability at a school district.
I also see you have experience in air quality specialism, and you were the chief scientist at another organization. And when did you start in?
Sorry, apologies. What was the last part?
When did you start in the position?
Oh, here or before this position?
This one?
This one. I started at the very end of August, so I think it was August 30th of last year.
Impressive, thank you.
Ms. Alvarez?
Thank you for such a thorough report. It's wonderful to see how we're not only taking care of our environment, but we're teaching students the importance of sustainability and environment, and of course, our fiscal sustainability as well, which are both very important to many of us. I noticed in your presentation, you had the high users, Dos Pueblos and San Marcos and the District Office. What about Santa Barbara High? Have you done an analysis there yet?
I did do analysis, and comparatively, their usage is not as high as the comparable buildings. So it's really just those three sites that were found to be exceeding what their square footage basis is. So the thing is, SoCal REN only has limited funding, so we wanted to initially, for this year, choose the top three sites that have the highest energy usage. We want to analyze those first. But yes, I will be analyzing Santa Barbara High School in the future date, but first I want to focus on those three sites.
Thank you. And I also noticed that you are working, implementing a garden at Santa Barbara Junior High, which is absolutely wonderful. I believe Galita Valley Junior High doesn't have a garden yet. Are, is that also on your to-do list to, or do they have one?
I thought they had one.
Do they have one?
I could be mistaken.
I think they might have one, but it needs to be revived, because I've been getting letters from some Galita Valley members saying that their garden needs to be revived. So when you get a moment, it'd be great in your next report, if you can include that in your report.
Will do.
Yeah, thank you. And then, as far as the grants that you have applied, which is wonderful, thank you for doing that. Have we received those grants already, or are we in the process? You have applied, and you haven't heard back?
I have applied, and I have not heard back yet. They're still determining, it takes the state anywhere between three to six months to look through all the applications, and then go through corrections. So they have reviewed our, or they're reviewing our application right now. So they'll probably come back and ask me to make corrections, and then it's just going to be a back-and-forth process that I don't anticipate the grant coming through until at least summertime.
Thank you. And I also appreciate the partnerships that you are forming, for example, with the Botanic Gardens, and perhaps Fairview Gardens or other organizations in the community. So thank you for doing this important work.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Ms. Capps?
Thank you, Desmond. This is overwhelming. I believe Ms. Ford was asking how long you've been here, because it sounds like a few years, not six months. An incredible amount of work. And I believe when this board passed and created this position, this was exactly what we had hoped with this, finding these pockets of money that already exist. And I love that off the bat, you started by finding tax utility that we were owed, so, and then working to find state funding. And I just, along those lines, wondered if you're in touch with our State Senator's office, State Senator Monica Malone, because I know she cares so much about this. I'm just curious if that, if this kind of work has overlapped with her in addition to all the other partnerships you've made?
Yes, I actually contacted her office, because when I first got into the position, there was a major education grant that I wanted to apply for, but I just, I didn't have time because I hadn't known about it prior. So I talked to, I forgot her main aide's name.
Jordi, Jordi Scully is...
Correct.
The environmental person, and is fantastic.
Yeah, I spoke with Jordi, and I just told her that, you know, we would really be interested in applying for this grant next year, we just didn't have time this year. And just kind of wrote, I wrote an email just saying officially that I would love to see this grant, and for her to advocate for this grant going forward for next year. It was just an education grant to get students outdoors. So, yeah, I'm going to follow up with her in a couple of months to see if there's any update on whether this funding will be renewed for this year.
Thank you. And I really appreciate how your presentation and your work clearly balances the two aspects of the job, which is the education piece, and actually getting out there in the garden, and working with students, and supporting teachers that are working with students, but also the financial piece and the financial sustainability. So it seems as though you really are toggling those two kind of different worlds in a way, but I appreciate how you're doing that. And to that end, I'm just curious, I'll end with this question. With this job, what has surprised you the most in the six months that you've had it?
I guess what surprised me the most so far is, you know, anything could be sustainability-related. It's an all-encompassing thing. So I think at first, I was like, oh, I can go into this, I can go into this, and it quickly became like, oh wait, I need to just find a couple of things, focus on those things, with the intention that there are all these other things that I could also do. So it's been very interesting. Like you said, being able to work in education, as well as to kind of look at the fiscal side, has been super rewarding and something that I really enjoy doing.
Well, it's clear. Thank you so much for your work.
Thank you.
Ms. Simms-Moulton?
Yes, hi, Desmond. Thank you, and welcome. I'll just admit it, you know, I was a little skeptical about this position when we first brought it up, alone that piece, perhaps not fully understanding, but also having to make some hard choices. But I'm glad we got here. I did come around to that, supporting that, and I really appreciate the report and the work that you've done in a short amount of time. And so I just needed to own that and acknowledge the work that you've done, and I see that it's a good fit, and I can see that the sustainability, how it really is going to include and give options to our students. So I appreciate that. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Kelly?
Thank you so much for your report. I'd just like to say I'm so grateful that you're in this position and that this position is a thing. Yeah, the report was thorough, and I think we need sustainability. That's a great thing to think about, and the fact that this is a position is great. So, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Yes, and I just, I won't repeat the comments of my fellow board members, but you're very impressive, and thank you for your thoroughness, especially for me, the waste, you know, the reduction of the plastic and how efficient we are now is just impressive. And of course, thank you for all the money that you are saving us and all the grants that you're going to work on. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay, we will now move to Report Number Three, the presentation of the Santa Barbara Unified Annual Financial Reports.
I'm waiting. We should be having an auditor here, Shiloh Grossoby. And there she is. Welcome. Board members, this is Shiloh Grossoby, and she's going to be giving you our audit report. I think maybe you're on mute. We're not able to hear you.
How about now?
There you go.
All right, great. I switched my microphone, and of course, I just had to reset that. Thank you so much, everybody, for having me here tonight. I will direct you to some of the highlights for your audits for June 30, 2021. And of course, as if you've heard me speak before, I'm always open for questions at the end. So again, you know, tonight, we're here to talk about the three different audits, and we'll start with the district's main audit report. That's the district as a whole. If the report is being pulled up, I want to direct your attention first to Page One, or it's also referred to PDF Page Four of your audit report. This is our independent auditor's report. This is why we're here, the goal of which is for us to provide you with an opinion about whether the financial statements that we're presenting tonight are materially stated based on our audit. And we have different levels of an opinion that we can provide for you in an audit. The highest level of assurance in an audit that we talk about is referred to as an unmodified opinion. In an unmodified opinion, that is a clean opinion. It does mean that the financial statements are materially stated based on our audit. And so the report tonight is an unmodified opinion. So that is a clean report on the district's financial statements. The next page that I will draw your attention to is PDF Page 103, or Report Page 96, depending on which version that you are looking at. Now, in addition to our auditor's report on the financial statements themselves, we do provide you with three other reports within this document, and they are summarized here on Page 96. The first of the other three reports is your report on internal control over financial reporting. And the purpose of this report is not to provide an opinion on your internal controls, rather, if we do identify any control deficiencies during the course of our audit that we believe rise to the level of a significant deficiency or material weakness is defined in the report itself, we want to make sure we bring those to your attention as the governing board, so that you are aware of those issues. And so we are happy to report that there are no material weaknesses or significant deficiencies as a result of our audit procedures over the financial reporting. as a result of our audit procedures over the financial reporting. The next report that we provide for you is your report on federal awards. As is mandated by the federal, uh, uniform guidance, we are required to audit federal programs based on very specific criteria that are established within that guidance. And as you're all well aware, for the fiscal year ended June 30, 2021, there was also quite a bit of new money that came in as a result of, uh, COVID-19 relief funds. You have your COVID-19 CRF, the learning loss mitigation funds. You also had the, uh, ESER and GEAR funds that were part of what we, we call the Education Stabilization Fund. And I do want to just highlight and draw attention to the fact that those new monies were a component of the audit during 2021. So I think that's important to note just from the user's perspective and as well as, uh, the governing board. So we are happy to report that the results of that federal compliance audit are, was an unmodified opinion over compliance as well. And there were no internal control deficiencies over the federal compliance reporting, um, that we needed to bring, bring forward as well. So that federal report is a clean report. And then last but not least, we are required to audit multiple state programs. Those are also mandated from this, the state of California, Department of Education. And there are a variety, um, at any given year, could be upward of 20 to 30 programs that we have to look at. Many of them are repetitive. Some of them are new. We're all very familiar with the distance learning that was required in the 2021 fiscal year end. The distance learning was a component of our audit. So just a lot of changes on the audit side during 2021 as well. And the report on your state programs was unmodified for all programs. With the exception of the school accountability report card, we did have a finding in that area and that was um, mainly due to the school accountability report cards not being updated um, for the last fiscal year. The details of that are included in the pages that follow this, um, this current summary that we're discussing right now. If you had specific questions about it, I'm happy to address it. Um, hopefully you've all had a chance to take a look at that. So that is the, uh, results of the reports within the financial statement audit. Um, other, oftentimes other, other items come to our attention that we include within our management communication letter, uh, that starts following on page, PDF page 109, but also report page 102. This is generally where we, um, have identified some of the other types of observations that we don't, um, believe have risen to the level of significant deficiency or material weakness, but still warrant communication with you and management and generally include, um, some of your ASB type of comments that we come across. Um, and that's summarized, like I said, on page 102. A couple of the big highlights that you will see as you look at the communication letter that we write directly to you as a governing board with respect to the district's audit. If you have that letter in front of you, um, you know, we had a, a new accounting pronouncement that was implemented during the current year during 2021, which was GASV 84. And that did change just mostly, uh, the reporting model for ASBs in, in just where they are presented within the financial statements themselves. So that was one new accounting change that occurred during the year. A couple of the other highlights in our communication letter. Really just, you know, we talk about, do we have disagreements with management or difficulties encountered during the audit? So happy to report none on both of those, um, topics. Other than that, if there are specific questions, I can pause for the district's report. Um, and then, and then, um, for questions, and then if you'd like, I can continue on with the measure I and J after that.
Um, yes, we will have to take public comments. So if you want to finish your report, then you can do public comment.
Okay, sounds good.
Thank you.
So I will speak to measure I and measure J and, and, and I'll end up speaking to them really, um, together because the setup of the reports, the page numbers are going to be identical and the, and the results for both are identical. So i- if, if you want to turn to either report, um, then you'll, you'll follow along, but just know right upfront that both the results for measure I and measure J are the same. So I'll speak to them i- in combination. But paid PDF page four, which is also report page one, is our independent auditors' report for, uh, each of the measures that has their own report. And again, uh, in these reports, we are providing you with a financial statement audit and a performance audit. So page one is your opinion on your financial statement audit. And so these are both unmodified opinions, uh, meaning the financial statements as presented are materially stated based on our audit. And then if you were to turn to PDF page 14 or report page 10, you'd now be looking at, uh, the internal control report over the financial reporting, which again is a similar report that we discussed with the district's audit. Um, you know, the purpose of which is to provide any significant deficiencies or material weaknesses that are identified during our audit, bring those, um, to your attention. So for both measure I and measure J, that is a clean report with no significant deficiencies or material weaknesses over the financial reporting to report. And then you get to the performance audit, which is I think the piece of the audit that most, um, of the constituents are probably most, um, uh, curious or, um, looking for the results of. And that begins on page, PDF page 19 or the report page 14. Now the perma- performance audit piece is where we are actually looking at the details of the expenditures to determine compliance with the ballot language um, as approved by the voter, voters. And so for both measure I and measure J, uh, the results of our test indicated that the bond funds were expended in accordance with the, um, ballot text, the bond measures as approved by the voters. So both of those are, I have no exceptions in the performance audits. And I will just for a moment, just bring your attention to pages 21, 22 on the PDF or page 16, 17 um, on the, on the report itself. It, it starts on the bottom of, of that page and then continues on the second page, you know, where we start diving into a little bit the methodology in the audit. And the reason why I want to bring this to your attention is so that you can just take a look and see in a performance audit, what exactly are we doing? We, we try to spell that out for you in these reports so that you really get a, a good understanding of what we're looking at and what we are evaluating to determine that performance. And if you look at page 22 more specifically, um, you know, number three, procedure number three just lays out for you what our population looked like, what our coverage, um, from a testing, from a sample size looks like. And I think you'll see in both cases, with these performance audits, uh, we have that opportunity to really uh, cover a large portion of the population as, as part of our testing. And so I think that's important just to, to recognize that these are, these audits do encompass, uh, quite a large amount of testing. And then the bottom of that page just concludes once again that there were no exceptions in our testing identified. So I also do provide for you communication letters for each of these reports specifically. Um, same format as the, the communication letter for the district. And so no, no disagreements, no, um, issues uh, identified during the audit. And particularly for these two reports, there were no significant changes in any accounting practices or policies that were required to be implemented this year. So with that, I will turn it back to you.
Uh, thank you so much. Um, Mr. Hio, are there any public comments on this item?
Mr. Muñoz, we do not have public comment on this item.
Okay, um, board members, do you have any questions or concerns? Um, Ms. Alvarez?
Thank you for the report. I'd like to make a request and I made the same request last year at this ti- I don't know if it was this time or the month before. Whenever the 1920 audit was presented, there were findings in regards to the internal controls for the ASB accounting. There was significant cash that had not been deposited and they were not, the procedures were not being followed. I would like the following year audits to reflect what was the remedy that was implemented to strengthen those internal controls. Um, if that requires changing your contract or I don't know what agreement you have, but I want to make sure that that's included in the following year audit. What happened with that finding? And in addition to that, I see that we have a similar finding on internal controls on page 102 for Santa Barbara High. So again, I'd like some follow-up on that. And the following years, the 21, 22 audit, I would like included in the audit report. What was the remedy that was implemented to take care of that oversight? And in addition to that, I'd like to make sure that we as a district, Dr. Maldonado, that we have regular training for our staff members who are in charge of ASB accounting. I know that CASBO has an excellent ASB manual. Uh, so I'd like to know what training is available, especially when we have staff turnover. Because this is one of the areas that I think we can, is an opportunity of growth for us as a district. So, thank you.
Board member Alvarez, I'd like to get some clarif- well, let me have, uh, you respond first and then I'll ask for clarification. Do you have a response for the request for, from?
Is that for me?
Yes.
Oh, sorry about that. Um, so traditionally, um, with the ASB comments that are reflected in the, the report, so this, just so understanding a little bit, this, this letter that's in the back of the report is actually a letter addressed to management. We include it in the report itself because the state does require us to include that letter in the bound report. Um, but because these comments don't rise to the level of what we would refer to as significant deficiencies or material weaknesses as it pertains to the, the district's, uh, financial statements as a whole, they, they are part of what we refer to as this, the management letter. So we look, we don't look at them as, um, the same level of a deficiency. And that said, uh, generally the, the, any follow-up, so it would go back to management normally is the one who then determines corrective action, what is the follow-up? And in most cases, they are the ones that would provide any communications back to the board regarding that follow-up. It is not, I haven't seen where that follow-up then gets included in the audit report. So we'd have to explore that a little bit more because it is not, um, really a reporting component of that letter. Uh, we can explore that. It's just, it's just not something that is part of the reporting standards. So, um, maybe we could follow up at a later time on whether or not that's the right avenue as opposed to this being, um, an avenue where management would report back on that follow-up.
And I fully understand that. And I, as a board member, I would like to see how that was, how that deficiency was looked at and fixed. And I would argue that that would be something an auditor should look for. And if that needs to change practice, I'm very much interested in having that discussion perhaps with internally. I believe it's extremely important for us to know how that oversight was fixed. And I still believe that an auditor should be looking at that. So, thank you.
Ms. Simms-Moten?
But did you want to say something, Supertuna?
Well, I will definitely want to discuss this further with board member Alvarez and, um, and with our auditors to come to a resolution. I, I do see the difference between the two issues that are being presented, uh, and in my experience, it would be up to us as management with Ms. Hernandez and myself to report back to the board how we fixed it. And then, uh, my understanding is that the auditor was then either confirm or deny that it was fixed.
Yes.
But we can certainly have a conversation about that. I'm seeing it more as a responsibility of us uh, as a, reporting back to board members than, than so much as the auditors.
Well, uh, I can tell you that I've seen it done where the auditor looks at it. But in any case, I'm happy to have that discussion internally and we can move forward from that.
A- absolutely. Thank you for that.
Good. Thank you. Actually, on that same thing, so the audit committee, uh, now consists of, uh, board member Alvarez and myself. And so we did have the the audit committee, we met with Elena. I think Lacy wasn't able to be there, but Ms. Hernandez was there. And so that did come up because that was a concern when I first came on, that that's a place where we really need to shore it up because it could be easily somewhere taking off and we're not really necessarily, uh, taking care of it. But before I finish that comment, I just wanted to say, I always like a clean audit. And also that the finding that came up was already fixed before we actually got there. So just in terms of, I think it was mixed up in the fact that there were two significant audits going on at the same time, um, that this all was happening. And so I want to appreciate that. But I think, I, I will say, so in 2016, when I came on, that was a huge, and I think, uh, we, I talked about that to the auditor, like, this is a huge thing. It's small. And I'd always get the answer like, it's in, it's not rising to the level of, of, you know, in terms of reportability or i- i- materiality in terms of that. But still talked about how important it is to figure out how we're going to do it. And so in, in the meeting and reviewing this particular audit, comparative to the past audits, it has changed. Perhaps what we need to do and discuss that at the audit committee is to say, what are you doing internally to do that? And to, to, to speak to that, because I know you inherited this part. But, uh, Elena really explained what was been going on, where we used to be, because we've come a long way from where we were to where we are now. So I think in terms of that being, that's an internal control, so to speak. And so to the auditor, and I know that it has been done, but I'm just saying that it can be done as part of our internal controls and that that's a report that would be coming from the auditor itself. But I think we can certainly have these discussions, it, you know, a little bit more, uh, in the audit committee so we can be real clear.
Okay, um, so then, um, oh, hold on a second, sorry. Okay, well, thank you so much. And if there's no more discussion of that, um, item, then we will go on to number four. The, uh, local control accountability, the LCAP. Mr. Vince?
All right, good evening. So, uh, you have the, in front of you, um, the, the slide deck so you can actually take a look at some of the data to make it easier to see. Uh, this report is actually addressing AB 130, which requires our district to present an update on the 21, 22 local control accountability plan and budget overview for parents by February 28th. The report has to include a mid-year outcome data, you know, any available outcome of data or outcome data, excuse me, that's related to the LCAP's metrics. It has to, second thing out of three items, the second item is mid-year expenditures. So it has to provide this. And then the third one is, uh, it has to include a new state required document that's, um, in front of you or it was, um, sent to you specifically. And that's the 21, 22 local control accountability plan supplement, otherwise known as the LCAP supplement. Next slide, please. As a district, we received federal and state funds to address the impacts of the pandemic and distance learning, as you know. Uh, you, all the SR funds, as you heard, ELO and so on. Uh, the LCAP supplement is specifically, it is a one-time mid-year report related to the engagement on and implementation of those recovery funds. That's what this plan is. So the document that was provided to you actually addresses that. And it's ironic that Shiloh was giving an audit on how we did with our spending of those expenditures. You know, that, talk about perfect planning, right? So, um, so that's what this report is. This report, you will not have to take action item on this report. It specifically, it will actually go and It specifically, it will actually go and be part of the final LCAP. So specifically, if you see from the slide, previous LCAPs would incorporate the budget overview, the annual update, including the new LCAP and then LCAP expenditures. Last year, we had not only the LCAP update, but we had the, the learning continuity plan. So this year is, it will be the budget overview, which we've always done, the LCAP supplement, our new LCAP, which is the 2223 year, and then a new item, which is called the action tables for 2223. That is basically, from my understanding, I haven't seen the template, but I think it's specifically still tied to expenditures. Next slide, please. So within the document, basically the successes, just to break it down, it's, we're just looking at what we've done is really keeping kids safe in schools and returning them safely to schools. That's been the successes. If you read the document and read the bullets, that's what you'll, you'll see essentially. And also the agility of what we've done in terms of the Delta variant and the Omicron variant, being able to move with agility. The second thing is incorporating MTSS, which you also know. But the key about that is not just focusing, focusing on academics. It's really tying in academics and social emotional learning. So, and then we really leaned in on the mental health services, as you know, with new staffing and so on. Next slide. Challenges, no surprise. All of these you've seen and you've heard, unfilled positions, absences and so on. I do want to point out the third bullet. I think that's particularly important with what we see with all the changes. What's been challenging is just the, the building of capacity. We have all these new positions and we move forward, but then it feels like we're stuttering a little bit because we have to address the crisis. But then it feels like now we're starting to move forward again, as you know. I just wanted to bring that to your attention. Next slide. So on November 16th, at the board meeting, we presented a progress report on student-centered goals. Assistant superintendents Anna Escobedo, Sean Carey and Fran Wagnit provided you a report. And that was in November. And you're asking, why am I bringing this up now? That is because we have to provide data in terms of what we are doing in terms of the work with the LCAP. The LCAP supplement template and the CDE report requirements came out, was just released in November. We were already moving ahead. We decided as a team, we decided to give you a progress report as of November. And as you see, the second one was, is going to be here in spring and then summer and fall. And I just want to remind you of the progress report that we're taking to show you how we are achieving these things. The second thing that's really important is the data that we have, we just finished our, our winter assessment with the STAR. So we are just finishing that. So we'll be able to provide that to you for the spring report, but we don't have it for you now. So I'm just going to go through the next five slides just to review the progress, this, the progress report. And this will make it quick. So next slide, please. Just as a reminder, the, the light blues specifically is at the end of the year. This is STAR data for ELA of what our, our students achieved at the end of last school year. And the green is the data from September, the end of September from STAR data. Again, this is ELA data for grades three through eight and 11th grade. Next slide, please. ELL, excuse me, ELA data, English Language Arts data. Again, this is specifically addressing our EML students. So we provided that to you with a report as well in November. Next slide. This is our math data, STAR data. And as you could see, again, the dark blue is our last school year and the red is this school year as of, it says there of 11, 12, 21, but I, that, that is not accurate. I'm just realizing that now because we finished the assessment at the end of September. So, and that's again, grades three through eight and 11th grade. I know for a fact we didn't test 11th grade at 11, with the second interim assessment. So specifically, that 2122 data is specifically captured at the end of September, our first assessment across the board. Next slide. And again, this is the data from, that's addressing our EML students. Same, same information. Next slide. Last slide has to do with our suspension rate. As you could see, it's 18, 19, 19, 20 before the pandemic. This data was specifically, it was actually captured when the report was given. So Dr. Wagnit gave this to you, this information to you. And it shows you the difference between previous practices and our current practices in the school district regarding suspensions. Next slide. So the next two slides are our expenditure slides. And specifically to let you know, just as a reminder, I think it would be helpful to let you know, this slide right here is goal one, and these are all of our actions that we've, that we are taking in goal one. And goal one, as a, just to remind you, is it, it states, prepare students for college and career by providing a meaningful, engaging, responsive and individualized education. The column to the left is, which says budgeted LCAP funds, that, those are the funds that were budgeted. And the, to the right, with, with Kim's team, they analyze the spending of the LCAP funds. And this is where we, this is, this is the projection by the end of the year of what will be spent in terms of the LCAP funds with these, with goal number one actions. Next slide, please. Slide, this slide addresses goal two and goal three. Goal two specifically, it says, or it states, create and sustain safe and affirming learning environments, ensuring our students and families feel valued, respected and connected to our schools. The third goal states, build capacity in the schools and district to improve student equity, engagement and outcomes. As you could see at the very bottom, these are the estimated, estimated, excuse me, estimated final total for goals one, two and three. There's three specific things I want to bring to your attention. I know that Kim's team is going to be providing you the second interim in March, that second interim report. During that time, her team is also going to be breaking down and analyzing what we've spent specifically and what we haven't spent specifically in, within our LCAP. So we can actually look at it and go to schools and go and make sure we're spending this funding. So that's number one. And I know that this hasn't been done before and we're doing this specifically with our schools as well. So that they know that can, that they're spending their monies and spending it properly and timely. The second thing to, to be mindful of is to know that the state specifically is coming back to us and saying, for the first time, by the time we end this school year, whatever funds we have left in our LCAP designated in our LCAP, we cannot, for the first time, take that money, sweep it up and put it into our general funds. We are not allowed to do that. We are required to spend the funding on the, the actions that we need to do. So that is going to be, that is the thing that we'll be focusing on as we're moving forward. And I think part of this has to do as well as that with all of the various funding sources, the state also realizes that we, we just need more time to address the spending. Another thing regarding this, the last thing, is that because of that, we gave schools LCAP funding. Schools were recommending, as, as Kim and I are meeting with principals to talk about their budgets right now at this time, we're letting them know that we're recommending that they spend down their LCAP funding line. But if they're not, if they're not spending it down, they can know that it will roll over into next year's budget. So they have a little bit of breathing room. So with that, that's my report for this evening.
Hi, Mr. Hio, do we have any public comments on this item?
Mr. Muñoz, we don't have any public comments.
Okay. Board, do you have any comments or questions? Ms. Ford?
Hi, I'm, thank you for the report. I'm wondering if there are any guidelines about how and in what kind of a situation schools can roll over the funds? I, I mean, why would you roll over the funds? Are you, are you providing some sort of oversight for that?
So what we're doing specifically, I think, actually, I think this question, I'm going to punt to Kim.
I think the idea is to try to get them to spend their LCAP funds in, in the current year. But if they can't, we, the new guidelines are that we can't just sweep it up and, and put it into the general fund, that that has to stay as LCAP funds, has to stay at the, the way that they were allocated and, and set up. So the idea is to try to spend it, but if we can't, that we can allow that to go forward, we won't be able to do anything other than to keep it where it is as LCAP funds. Hope that answers that question.
Well, I was wondering what kind of a scenario would be that they can't spend money?
A lot of it has to-
And so a lot of times, sometimes you might give some guidelines, like I'm saving up for this particular thing, so I want to use it for next year's, this bigger project or expense. I'm just wondering if you're going to provide oversight. Otherwise, there might be a tendency just to ward.
Right, right. Lot of the ways that we're not being able to spend money this year have to do with staffing and that we are just not having enough people to-
Okay.
Like we have it set up of, of who's going to do the work. We just are not finding the people to do the work.
Thanks.
Yeah.
Ms. Sims-Moulton?
I had a question on your, on the suspension rate slide. I'm, I'm glad to see that they are, they're less in, in the gold bar, which is representing 20, 21, 22. Is that resulting from the new discipline approach that we're taking, that we have less of it? That's question number one. And then on the data for the Asian and Black African American, there's like not anything there. So is that something to celebrate? What, what's going on there?
I could tell you, I could tell, I could answer the first question. The second one I would ask, that would ask Dr. Wagnit-
Okay.
-to bring back to you.
Sure.
I do know that, and having talked to Dr. Wagnit, Wagnick and her team, that this definitely has, the impact that you're seeing, it has to do with the new practices. And I know that there was a lot of suspending that had to do with alcohol and drug abuse and so on, or use of alcohol and drug on campus, campuses. So I know with the various practices that have changed in terms of supporting student behavior is actually making that impact that you see.
Okay. And then my last question would be, and you're saying that Dr. Wagner's going to give back the information regarding that, that doesn't show any reflection of suspensions for Asian and, okay.
Yes.
If it's none, then great, you know, but if, if, if it's there, we need to reflect it. And I was also wondering in terms of socio-disadvantage, socioeconomic disadvantage and homeless and foster, is that disaggregated or could you potentially see some of them, some ethnicities between those two categories? Because sometimes they're in there twice, right? They could be like, say, Black African American could be in homeless, it could be in, so, so is there a way to clear that out or?
So I do know that the, the reason that we fold in the foster youth is because we have such a small number. And I know that, that with discerning this, the smaller number, actually, let me do this. Let me go back and talk to Dr. Wagnit regarding this.
Yes.
But I do know, and we've talked about this before, that because of the small number of identifying the, the foster youth in terms of this type of data, so.
Yeah, no, no, I appreciate, you know, coming back. So it's just an observation as you're presenting that, you know, this information. I'm just looking at the, also just the huge change on the homeless and foster youth between 19 and 20 and then 21, 22. So is that a result of something that we're doing well? So just to make the connection in the changes.
It definitely is. Yes.
Thank you.
Ms. Alvarez?
Thank you for the update. I mean, it's very sobering looking at this data, no matter how many times I look at it. And of course, it's a reminder of all the work in front of us. And I so look forward to us getting back into the discussions about how we can look at this in a really deep, deep dive and, and see what we can do different, right? Than what we've done. I mean, when I see 54 students of 484 are meeting ELA standards and then in 21, 22, it's 41 of 467, that's just very, very concerning and saddening. So I know there's a lot of work ahead of us, so thank you.
And, and just as a reminder, like this is a snapshot at the beginning of the school year, so, and as you know, so-
Yeah, I, I know. Still makes me sad.
No, I appreciate that, yes. And, and so we're looking forward to bringing that information to you. As you'll see the next, next interim of data, it'll be exciting.
Thank you. I look forward to that.
Okay. I guess there's no further questions at this time?
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Have a nice evening.
Okay. Now we will go to, let me see, coming events? Okay. Or future agenda items? Oh, Dr. Maldonado?
Board members, Board President Muñoz, one of the requests we have is to schedule a board study session on the topic of college prep and honors courses in secondary. So I wanted to just bring that topic here tonight and I'll work with you, Board President, to set up a study session for us. Ms. Carey, Associate Superintendent of Secondary Instruction will be helping lead some of that work.
Right, anyone else? No, okay. We're, we are going to return to closed session at, let me see, yeah, closed session before we adjourn. And so we'll go ahead and do that now.